Good morning, good morning. Can everybody find a seat? Please find a seat. We are about to begin. If everybody could find a seat. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management. At this time, can everyone please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please come up to the sergeant's desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to the fiscal 2024 preliminary budget hearing for the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management. My name is Joanne Areola and I am the Chair of the Fire and Emergency Management Committee. Today, we will review the fire departments and the New York Emergency Management's fiscal 2024 budgets to understand how they address the needs of all New Yorkers. I would like to begin by thanking the members of the fire department for their sacrifices over the past year. The frontline responses of EMT, paramedics, and firefighters have been on full display throughout the year because of their direct life-saving actions, and our city is a safer place. And thank you to the fire inspectors, who really are the frontline in keeping our buildings and residences safe. The fire department's EMS members and firefighters are known as New York's best and bravest. I believe those nicknames are aptly given. I would also like to thank the members of the New York City Emergency Management. They have been working incredibly long hours to assist in the city's response, performing a job that often does not get the recognition it deserves. The fire department's fiscal 2024 preliminary budget totals $2.24 billion with 17,239 positions. The fiscal 2024 preliminary budget has undergone moderate changes, decreasing $50.1 million since adoption. The department has had four new needs for fiscal 2023 totaling $160 million, and federal funding supports the majority of the fiscal 2024 increases, primarily from the state Homeland Security Grant and Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. The fire department's fiscal 2023 through 2027 capital commitment plan totals $1.5 billion and supports 330 district projects. The committee has held oversights on various topics over the past year, about the city's emergency preparedness, the response to public health emergencies, the failure of the city's emergency dispatch system, and we hold a hearing and we will hold a hearing regarding fire and life safety inspections, bolstering the city's ability to prevent fires before they have a chance to irreversibly change lives. There were new needs in the preliminary financial plan, including $140 million for PS adjustments, including uniforms overtime, and $20 million in various OTPS adjustments. The committee would like to revisit these items and others that were not included in the budget. First, the possibility of bringing back the fifth firefighter. Second, the increasing amounts of lithium-ion batteries and what the department is doing to mitigate that issue. And three, smoke alarm access and use in the city to ensure that we are helping to increase safety where we can. I would also like to discuss safety fire inspections, the wait times, the catch-up that they have recently done in lowering their backlog for fire emergencies, and the Be Heard program. I would like to thank our committee staff for the hard work, financial analyst Tanveer Singh, unit head Jack Story, committee counsel Josh Kingsley, policy analyst Will Honggash, and my chief of staff Phyllis Inserillo. I'd like to acknowledge that we have been joined by our committee members, council member Carmen De La Rosa and council member Oswald Feliz. And my dear friend, Lynn Schulman. I will now turn this over to counsel for swearing in.
Thank you so much, Chair. For this panel, we'll have FDNY testifying. On behalf of FDNY will be Commissioner Laura Kovan-Kavanaugh, Chief of Department Hodgins, Acting First Commissioner Kristoff Michael Fields, Chief of EMS, and Nafisa Noonan, who is Assistant Commissioner for Recruitment. I'm going to swear you all in at once. Please just raise your right hand and affirm after me. I affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to answer honestly to council member questions. If you do, go ahead. Go ahead. Awesome. You may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and good morning, Chair Areola and all the council members present, council member Schulman, council members De La Rosa and Feliz, all of our partners in government. It's nice to see you. My name is Laura Kavanaugh and I am the Commissioner of the New York City Fire Department. I am joined today by Jack Hodgins, Chief of Department, Lizette Kristoff, Acting First Deputy Commissioner, Michael Fields, Chief of EMS, and Nafisa Noonan, Assistant Commissioner for Recruitment and Retention. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the preliminary budget for the New York City Fire Department. I would like to acknowledge and thank the City Council for its recent legislation on e-mobility devices. As you know, New York City has experienced a great number of incidents of fire caused by lithium-ion batteries commonly found in e-bikes, e-scooters, and other powered mobility devices such as electric skateboards and hoverboards. A recent 5Lm fire in the Bronx is an example of the extraordinary destruction that can be caused by a single e-bike. As we testified last fall, we have seen a steep growth in the rate of these battery fires. He gave you the numbers at that time, and I can provide for you an updated picture of this past Friday, which includes at this point in 2023, 45 injuries and two deaths sustained due to these fires. This is an issue of great importance, and I am very grateful for the council's attention to it. We are working with policymakers at the state and federal level, and we have developed a strong cooperative relationship with the Consumer Product Safety Commission, including sharing information with their investigators and having them attend training sessions with FDNY fire marshals. But there is no partnership more important than our work with the City Council and the recent passage of several bills through Chair Areola and this committee. I know that there is other legislation in the works, and I look forward to our continued collaboration on this important topic. A mandate from the public and small business community upon becoming commissioner was to improve the way that the fire department serves customers who need plan approval and inspections in order to open or renovate a small business. An inspection is often the last stop for a small business, a theater, or a school that is opening soon for business. For too long, the plan approval and inspection process associated with this ability to open took months and sometimes even several months. We used our internal specialists to investigate our software process and implement tools that help reviewers more quickly evaluate plans. We met with the city's Chief Efficiency Officer Melanie De La Raca and members of her team, and we worked with several fellow agencies and experts. We welcomed counterparts and exchanged best practices, learning from their experience with other types of plan review. We eliminated redundancies and added time to the process in order to make sure that applicants were less frustrated. Just as importantly, we emphasized customer service among our staff so that not only does the process take less time than it used to, but applicants have a better experience as well. We solicited feedback from the end-users and we took their suggestions into account. Listening to the people who navigate our processes gave us great perspective about our system. As we eliminated inefficiencies and streamlined the permitting workflow, we generated meaningful improvement. To give you an example, in August 2022, we had more than 2,700 fire alarm plans in the queue to be reviewed. As of last month, that number had dropped to approximately 300. At one point in 2022, the process took approximately 22 weeks. By January, that wait time had dropped to approximately three weeks. Outside of plan review, I'm pleased to note that we also have 50 additional inspectors coming on board. Upon completion of their training, they will help us continue to boost our headcount in the Bureau of Fire Prevention to make sure that we are being both expeditious and continuing to keep the city safe. 2022 was also a very successful year for the fire department in terms of education and outreach to the community. As the city recovered from the pandemic and many community groups returned to in-person events, the FDNY Community Affairs Unit combined newly-developed virtual programming and tools with traditional forms of outreach. Using a best-of-both-worlds approach, the Fire Safety Unit, the Mobile CPR Unit, and the Community Engagement Unit all use digital platforms to maximize reach. We are constantly analyzing and expanding our outreach targeting, engaging with youth and senior centers, immigrant groups, civic and community organizations, schools, community boards, elected officials, just to name a small number. The Fire Safety Education Unit conducted more than 2,400 fire safety presentations, updating members of the community on topics like fire safety, safe cooking, education about e-bikes and electronic mobility devices, and making an emergency plan. We held approximately 700 events in schools, making classroom presentations, and engaging 156,000 students. Overall, FDNY Fire Safety Education engaged nearly 300,000 individuals with educational programming. In fact, tomorrow, our Fire Safety Education Team is partnering with the City Council and training City Council staffers on fire safety. This included an active fire prevention week, during which firefighters held tabling events across the city coordinated to coincide with aggressive social media and email campaigns, youth-oriented programming at the fire zone, and more than 200 firehouse open houses at which residents received apparatus tours and equipment demonstrations. We also held more than 25 Change Your Clocks, Change Your Batteries programs across the city to promote safer smoke alarm use. We partnered with other city agencies to magnify our outreach efforts, partnering with the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to launch Keeping Homes Fire Safe campaign, the Department of Youth and Community Development to provide fire safety education at cornerstone programs, and the Department of the Aging to coordinate programming for seniors. We also installed more than 14,000 smoke alarms and distributed many more for residents to install themselves. It was also a very busy year for the Mobile CPR Unit. I want to highlight their work here today because I think that many council members and community leaders associate the fire department with fire safety education, but we also run a very successful compression-only CPR training program, and we are eager to engage with your offices to expand that. This unit is made up of active and retired FDNY EMTs and paramedics who perform in-person and virtual CPR training, enabling New Yorkers to go out into their communities and, should the occasion arise, use their skills to assist their neighbors. In 2022, through aggressive outreach, engaging schools and community groups, and erecting pop-up sites across the city, we trained approximately 30,000 individuals, a third of whom were high school students. One of those 30,000 individuals was Mayor Eric Adams, who joined me and members of the CPR team for a brief demonstration at an FDNY block party last summer. Last month, an off-duty FDNY EMT waiting to start a fitness class heroically revived a patient who suddenly went into cardiac arrest. After instructing a bystander to call 911, the EMT began rounds of CPR and used an AED, after which the patient slowly began to breathe again. Moments later, an ambulance arrived on the scene. This incident exemplifies just how crucial it is for New Yorkers to learn CPR. It is truly a life-changing skill. We found that high-profile incidents drive interest in members of the public learning CPR, and we pride ourselves on being ready to use those when there is an uptake and engagement when that happens. An example of this occurred, that most of us know about, on January 2nd, on Monday Night Football, when Buffalo Bill's safety, Damar Hamlin, collapsed and was revived after receiving CPR on the field and is gratefully okay today. The FDNY CPR Unit took immediate action to engage members of the community, and as a result, January of this year was the most successful month in the history of the program. FDNY educators trained more than 3,500 individuals in CPR, a nearly 400% increase from the same period last year. Numbers were elevated in February as well, with over 4,000 individuals trained, a 620% increase from last year, and we are on record-breaking pace for the next year. If anyone listening today is interested, please reach out to the Community Affairs Unit, and we'd be delighted to sign you up and your group for training. Looking ahead, we have a packed calendar of outreach events scheduled for 2023. We're continuing to partner with community groups, agencies, and elected officials, and we have expanded our outreach to faith-based communities, convening an FDNY clergy council. Through this group, we will be assisting houses of worship with fire alarm giveaways, educational programming, and culturally competent education. Looking ahead, this budget contains funding for several modest new needs. We work in close collaboration with the mayor's Office of Management and Budget to assess and project this current year's spending and to make adjustments as necessary. Largest of these include several adjustments to OTPS and PS funding in FY23, which will fund mainly overtime spending and uniform operations. Other new needs include an adjustment for motor fuel to meet rising fuel costs. The fire department did receive a modest program to eliminate the gap or peg requirement in this budget. We are being asked to eliminate 16 civilian positions, which will save the city more than $1.1 million. This reduction includes positions that do not impact fire operations or EMS operations and likewise will not impact fire alarm dispatchers or fire protection inspectors. My focus, and the mayor's focus, and the focus of everyone here is on making sure that the level of service that we provide to New Yorkers remains at its highest level. We take pride in protecting the people and property of this city. Nobody in the world is more qualified to provide emergency response than the members of the FDNY, and we are grateful to the council for its support and assistance in this mission. And I thank the chair for acknowledging our members at the beginning of this hearing, who every day are doing the difficult and dangerous work of saving lives. I would be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Since it's a budget hearing, we'll start with overtime. So, the fire department added $140 million for uniformed overtime in this plan, bringing the fiscal 2023 overtime budget to $418 million. Over the past five fiscal years, the department has averaged $330 million in overtime spending, while the budget at adoption has averaged $261 million. I understand that overtime fills an important role in keeping staffing levels appropriate and ensuring adequate emergency response. But if annual additions are nearing $88 million, if the budget is not reflecting historical spending, what can be done better to budget overtime?
So, one thing I would just want to mention, and then I'll hand it over to our budget director, is that COVID has had a substantial impact on our hiring, as you know. So, for almost two years, we were unable to put through fire and EMS classes. And so, what that has meant is that, you know, our service levels remain the same, and the reason they remain the same is we've been filling those gaps with overtime. So, we are very aggressively, like many other city agencies, trying to look at how we can catch up with that hiring, but it does have a substantial impact. You know, COVID unfortunately has had a long-term impact at hiring and getting to headcount in both fire and EMS titles, so that's why you see those adjustments in overtime. But we are looking at, you know, the projections for many of the out-years to see how, as we catch up with hiring, that overtime will go down. I'll hand it over to budget director.
So, just to follow up on that, you know, as the commissioner was saying, the vast majority of our overtime is tied to filling posts at fire companies, and so... So, right now, we are, at the beginning of March, we were 483 under our budgeted headcount for firefighters, and that's really what's driving our overtime. So, more than three-quarters of our overtime is just tied to filling those posts. So, we do anticipate that as we get closer to budgeted headcount and continue hiring, that that number should go down in the out-years.
And I just want to make mention that, you know, even though there have been staffing challenges with the fire department, EMS, and fire inspectors, they show up.
Yeah.
And they do their job. So, for that, I am extremely grateful. So, what the department is doing to, what is the department doing to explore federal sources to fund overtime? The FDNY has, oh, just that question. Are there any federal sources that could, you know, kind of help? Are there grants available that could help with overtime?
So, we do actually receive a significant amount of federal funding for overtime through Homeland Security, and that mostly covers training-related overtime, which helps ensure that, you know, our members can attend training sessions and we can backfill those positions in the field. There aren't a lot of federal overtime funding opportunities for just basic operations, but we certainly, we have a grants team, and we look out for opportunities on a regular basis.
And the overtime that they're working, is that they volunteer to do this, or is it mandated?
So, it can be both, and it depends on what the staffing challenges are at that time. I'll let the chief expand on that a little bit.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we have what's called minimum staffing in all of our fire companies. Each ladder company has a certain amount of people we need to start the tour, same with the engine companies. It's volunteer to a point, but when we don't have enough, it becomes mandatory.
It's understandable.
We also, just to note, we did make an adjustment to the way that that works to allow some folks who are able to work more overtime to take that up, to take the pressure off of those who may not be available at the moment for other family reasons.
And that includes EMS, fire inspectors, dispatchers, that includes all...
Yeah, overtime works a little bit differently with each workforce, but in every case, as you mentioned, our members are dedicated to the mission and are taking the overtime and to make sure that the service levels remain the same.
Okay. I heard you speak about our fire inspections and wait times. The department has uniformed personnel, complete risk-based and mandatory inspections based on our fire code and fire operations requirements. Do you believe that there is, since you did note in your testimony there was a significant, you know, drop in the wait time, and we do have, I think about 170 spots that have not been filled, are we in a position to start hiring more staff for those positions so that their response time can get even faster?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would say, you know, the inspections done in the field by fire companies are risk-based, as you mentioned. The wait time drop that I was referring to, that's the Bureau of Fire Prevention, those are both our fire inspectors and a lot of technical experts who do things like plant review. And so, you know, they really, you know, deserve a lot of credit. As you mentioned, again, due to COVID-related hiring challenges, they've been under headcount for some time, but really realizing the impact this was having on small business, they really dug deep and found ways just to better streamline their work, to put additional overtime in place, and made a really substantial difference. And we are still looking about how to keep hiring, how to make sure we're filling those open slots that remain, and that is purely a function of the challenges of COVID-related hiring, but we are catching up on it.
And I mean, these are, the filling of these positions is really a no-brainer. They actually pay for themselves. They are a revenue-generating division of the fire department, so, you know, we'd love to see that happen. And are there other positions that are able to form, perform these inspections, or are they only specific to the people who are trained in fire prevention?
So, it depends on the type of inspection we're referring to. So, as you mentioned, there are many inspections happening in the field by the fire companies, and those are around, you know, reducing risk in buildings. When we're talking about things like fire alarm plan review, that requires, you know, like electrical engineers and other forms of experts along with the fire inspector. So, it depends sort of which area we're tackling, what, who can fill that, but one of the things they have been looking at is cross-training between positions wherever is possible. And then I would also say that part of the team that came in and assisted fire prevention was our trained members of our incident management team, who are fire and EMS. So, they came in and helped with, you know, streamlining, just dealing with some of the backlog, really came in and put an added backstop to our fire inspectors and our experts. So, it really would, I would say, call it, it was a department-wide approach to tackling that problem.
Okay, I want to move on to lithium batteries. So, what is the current protocol for responding to a lithium battery fire?
We receive a call for a fire. We don't really know right off the bat if it's a lithium-ion battery fire, but we respond as normal. Usually, when the fire is extinguished and the Bureau of Fire Investigation comes in and they determine the cause of the fire, we find out it was a lithium-ion battery fire. And that sets off a procedure of, like, it becomes a hazardous material incident. We have to call our hazmat units to come, take the batteries, overpack them. As you know, even after the fire is extinguished, these batteries sometimes can reignite for up to 48 hours and sometimes longer, so they have to be what's called overpacked into certain materials that will prevent that from happening. So, it's basically, you know, the same response, but the aftermath is a little bit different in that we have to deal with the batteries themselves.
One thing I'd also want to add to that is one of the greatest things we can do to keep our firefighters safer, who are already going into dangerous conditions, is to know ahead of time whether or not a location has the possibility of having these, and so our fire marshals actually have been working with some of the larger scooter companies to actually ask them, including, you know, City Bike and others, to actually have them tell us where they are storing their batteries. They can put that information into a program called SIDS, which is what the firefighters are looking at as they're responding to a fire in real time. And so, what we hope it means is that, while we can't know in every private home whether or not someone has one of these, in the case of, say, a warehouse or a commercial location that may have many of them, more and more, our firefighters will be able to know before they get there that that's the case, and so they can approach accordingly, knowing that this will be a more dangerous fire. So, we're hoping to increase that. We actually, some members of the council have been very helpful in identifying those locations, and we're very grateful for that, and we're going to keep going until we make sure that in our emergency system, we can know when we're approaching one of those locations.
Okay, and, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to recognize that my colleague Keith Powers has joined us. Lithium-ion batteries is probably one of the most, one of the greatest public safety issues we have right now, and I think everything kind of goes hand-in-hand because, you know, having fire inspectors go out, visiting locations, knowing beforehand, and, you know, they, there were 44 confirmed fires in New York City caused by lithium-ion batteries, and, I mean, honestly, that costs an enormous amount of manpower and personnel, because these fires seem to ignite like as if a bomb had gone off in a building. And so, you know, that alone is something that we really have to, you know, kind of work on because we're going in not knowing and not knowing what the after-effects are. And so, my next topic will be the equipment cleaning for the bunker gear. Now, recently, actually, it started when I first had come in, a new laundry service over at Randall's Island. I believe they're in the process of getting that done. We don't have nearly as many as we need to for our firefighters to get their bunker gear cleaned because it's not a short-term process, like we're dropping our stuff off at the dry cleaners, right, and get it back by next day. So, while firefighters, while firefighters fight fires, harmful materials are being burned and propelled into the air, and we don't really know what's coming out through the ion battery, but we know it's toxic, right, and eventually we'll figure that out. These harmful particles end up in the clothing and protective gear of our firefighters. To get these harmful materials out of their clothes, they must be washed and dried. What is the overall state of bunker gear cleaning in the department?
So, I would say a couple of things, and then we'll get into the weeds. One, thank you for declaring the state of emergency around lithium-ion batteries. I think the more attention we can bring to this, the better. As you mentioned, you know, it's a really critical public safety issue, and we really have to come at it from all angles, and one of those angles is the risk that it also confronts to our members. As you mentioned, these, when we say they catch fire, it's a little misleading. They really do sort of explode with a lot of flame, which not only means that it's very difficult to get out of your apartment, and at that point, it can be very difficult for our members to get in, and these fires are very difficult to extinguish. So, on every level, these are more dangerous for the public and for our members than your average structural fire in most cases. And we are looking very closely at what you mentioned, which is that the potential that these are more toxic, and I'd also say generally, there are more modern materials in homes that are more toxic to firefighters, and we know that cancer is one of the, you know, leading risks that we need to tackle for so many reasons. You know, World Trade Center cancer, but also along with the day-to-day exposures that come with this job that are getting more dangerous as more toxic materials, including e-bikes, are involved in fires. So, we are looking at substantially increasing both the availability of the members to be able to clean their gear. And they do have two sets of gear right now, and they can send their gear out for cleaning, but we're trying to increase the rates of them doing that. And as you mentioned, we're also looking to increase the infrastructure over the long term, working with our council partners to get more of these cleaning facilities, so that as members more and more want to have their gear cleaned and would be encouraged to have their gear cleaned, we'll actually be able to do that. So, we'd be happy to keep working with you on that critical issue. You know, we do agree, and as you mentioned, this is not like your average washer and dryer. Cleaning bunker gear is a specialized cleaning procedure, and so we're looking to build more infrastructure so eventually we can be cleaning as much bunker gear as is needed by our members.
So, on average, what is the, how often does bunker gear get cleaned?
So, as the commissioner mentioned, each firefighter has two sets of gear. Every six months, one of those sets goes out to be cleaned by a private vendor and also look at it for any defects, and that's fixed, or they replace it. But, you know, we have the washing machines and dryers. Right now, it's at two... Right now, it's at two locations, and we're, we're working on a third location. After each fire, but we've been working on for, for years now, what's called a cancer reduction program, which is highlighting the fact that the fires we go to, there are many carcinogens and cancer-causing agents in the, you know, in the smoke that will get on your gear. We've been encouraging firefighters. In fact, you know, what we call in the fire service, when somebody gets really dirty, it's called they're salty. And we had a slogan, which is, "Clean is the new salty." We're, we're just trying to really encourage them to send their gear in for cleaning. And we are getting much better compliance now than, than we have in years past. We have the capacity to clean 200-plus sets of, of bunker gear per day. So we are, after we have fires, every fire company is receiving emails from our safety command, letting them know that it's, you know, in their best interest because of cancer-causing agents to send the bunker gear in for cleaning. That cleaning really can have a 24-hour turnaround time. The only issue that we may come into, if everybody starts to take advantage of this, which we want, is when they do that, we sometimes have to provide loner gear, and we need to boost our supply of loner gear. So I believe that's going to be a budget ask. But we are right now prepared to clean the bunker gear for everybody who goes to a fire.
Thank you. In 2011, the fire department under Mayor Bloomberg removed the fifth firefighter from every company instead of requiring that two engine companies of four firefighters respond to each call. In 2016, Mayor de Blasio administration struck a deal with the city's firefighters union to reinstate teams of five at 15 of the city's busiest engine companies, to which has been expanded. Currently, how many fire companies use the fifth firefighter?
So based on that collective bargaining agreement, it's 20 companies that are staffed with the fifth firefighter when medical leave is below a certain point, which it, it has been for some time. So those 20 companies have been staffed. As you know, we will be entering into contract negotiations again, and, and this will certainly be one of the topics of those negotiations.
And does the staffing levels make it difficult to staff the fifth firefighter?
The effect that we're under head count, it, it can present a challenge, yeah.
Is the demand for firefighters greater during the cold months for the fifth firefighter?
Well, so there's two pieces. We are more busy in the winter months. There are more fires when it is cold. And then more of the particular circumstances where the chiefs would recommend an additional firefighter also happen in the winter. Storms and, and snow and flooding are, are all situations where operations might assess the situation and decide whether or not an additional firefighter was needed. Is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, normally, we, we would think about upstaffing to five firefighters for a snowstorm because it's harder to stretch the hose line with four firefighters. But under normal conditions, we have the 20 staffed and the, we, our procedures are basically designed to, you know, compensate for what we have. We're doing, you know, we've been doing it for many years this way, and, and I, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah, I mean, that is one thing with the fire department is no matter how low your staffing is, why, again, your staffing is, you know, you really do get the job done. And I think that's both a blessing and a curse because you need the extra bodies. The extra bodies would be helpful, but you continue to do the job with the bodies that you have because you such, have such dedicated membership. So how does the department work with the union to prioritize and add the fifth firefighter to various firehouses?
So there's two pieces, and I'll let the chief speak to the second half. But when it comes to collective bargaining and negotiations, you know, the top leadership of the department, you know, identifies what the needs might be in the next contract and then sits down with the Office of Labor Relations and participates. Both the chief and I participate personally at times in those negotiations, especially when we're talking about things that are critical for operational purposes. In terms of on a day-by-day basis, I'll let the chief speak to how they decide when they're going to add the fifth firefighter.
So just to clarify, you're asking which, why, how did we select the 20 companies to have the fifth firefighter? Is that the question? Different, you know, things will, will kind of, you know, give us reasons to do that for specific fire companies, but it's mainly based on the type of buildings that they primarily respond to, the type of hose stretches that are in the neighborhoods where they respond, and also the geographical location. Sometimes if they are kind of by themselves for a little while before another company will get there, and based on different areas of the city, sometimes the fire companies are spread out a little bit more, Staten Island and Eastern Queens. But it's mostly based on just an evaluation of response times and, and the type of buildings that they respond to. And we, we know when it would be beneficial, particularly like a, a multiple dwelling, which is a hand stretch of the hose where we have to go up to the sixth floor. We know that's going to take more, more labor. So we would, those are the companies we selected to have the extra firefighter.
Okay, and just want to take a moment to, to notice, to say on the record that we've been joined by council members Riley, Kagan, Holden on Zoom, and Councilmember Carr. Thank you. So in addition to staffing and, you know, how, the money that we need for overtime and such, we need better equipment, correct? So, and I know that there were 25 rigs that were supposedly, supposed to be taken out of service, but they have not been taken out of service. So would that be because of the fact that we're down on, on vehicles as well, trucks and for the fires that we're seeing? And that's something that we can look into.
So actually, the issue with the vehicles is a supply chain one. We've actually written to the, the companies that produce our fire apparatus and our ambulances, imploring them to prioritize our items. There are a number of parts that are coming from all over the world, and like you've seen with many other discussions of the supply chain, they are also impacting our apparatus. And so, you know, actually, I implore to the council as well to work with us to put that pressure on the manufacturers. You know, we do have the funds to purchase those. There is a backlog due to the supply chain and actually getting new pieces of apparatus that we are funded for.
I certainly know that. I have that with my own budget and stuff. I have one more, one more group of questions, and then I'm going to yield to my committee members. Revisiting past legislation, Intro 519 would require the fire department to survey each firehouse to determine the permanent facility upgrades needed to facilitate a mixed gender workplace. I was proud to prime sponsor that. Can the department provide an update on capital investments that aim to address these upgrades?
So we began, after you passed your legislation, we began a survey of all of our facilities. We're about a third of the way through that, and so we're preparing the report for you where we'll discuss, you know, which facilities need that upgrade, what the nature of those upgrades are, and what the cost of those upgrades are. I should say that that is, you know, your legislation and your report, I think, is going to be especially helpful in illuminating the issue. But I will also say that our facilities folks have been ahead of this. Anytime they renovate a firehouse, either in partial or in full, putting in female, facilities for female firefighters is part of the planning. So for all new, new builds, we're already doing that. But as you know, we have many firehouses that are very old or haven't been renovated in some time, and so those will all be in the report as, as to what needs to be done and, and what the level of effort is for getting that done.
And it would include washrooms as well as locker rooms?
Yes, washer and dryer spaces are being included in all new firehouses as well.
No, I mean washrooms for the female firefighters.
Oh, yes, yes.
Comfort stations.
The facilities we're talking about are a locker room, a bathroom, and, you know, changing facilities.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you. I now yield to my colleagues.
Thank you, Chair. For questions, we'll hear from councilmembers Schulman, Powers, Kagan, and Feliz. So Councilmember Schulman, you may begin.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Commissioner, it's always good to see you. I want to congratulate you, Chief Fields, for becoming the chief of EMS. I'm a former member of the leadership of EMS on the administrative side. I was there for several years. My questions actually pertain to EMS, my beginning one. So I want to know if there's any funding set aside for the volunteer EMS sector technology and communication so that they can have better interoperability with the department?
I don't believe that there's any funding set aside. However, in respects to the technology that we provide to the volunteers, we offer them the cell phones as well as radios. So whenever they are activated through NISIM, through the contracts that NISIM has with them, that they're able, they're able to utilize those, that technology.
Is EMS still part of, I mean, I'm sorry, is the volunteer sector still part of the EMS 911 system?
So the last time that they were activated was July of 2022. They should have been activated for the entire summer. They failed to deactivate them, so that deactivation happened within the last two weeks, and they were deactivated from the 911 system. However, they still utilize the dispatch system the same way they did prior to COVID, so they call in to the respective Mars desk, which is whenever they get flagged for respective assignments in their areas. So they're dispatched in that fashion, or they notify us in that fashion.
So by them being deactivated and they're not part of the daily system, is there a reason for that? Does that increase the, the call times or the response times, I should say?
So, so the volunteers themselves is community-based. They are technically not a part of the New York City 911 system. However, we have had partnerships with them for decades. So whenever we have COVID surge as well as the pandemic or summertime when the call volume goes up, we reach out to NISIMs, and they in turn reach out to the volunteers as well as private contractors to see who can offer services to us. That's done for a period of time based off the contract we have with NISIM. Like I said, last time, the contract wasn't deactivated, it should have, and we just deactivated them two weeks ago.
Okay, I have a number of volunteer ambulance corps in my district. I serve Forest Hills, Rigo Park, Q Gardens, and Richmond Hill, and they're very active. So I would like for some consideration to be given to make them more intricate in the, in the response, in the 911 system. That, that's all my questions for now, but I'll circle back later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Powers.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair. Thanks for the testimony. I just want to follow up on the section around lithium ion fires, and I want to credit my colleagues, Councilmember Feliz, Councilmember Brewer, and others for their legislation to tackle that crisis. Two questions. One is, are there any budgetary needs around that right now? Obviously, it's a much, it's a growing crisis. We're trying, we're starting to get a handle on it. I appreciate you, all your efforts at the federal level to try to get these federal agencies to do a better job of regulating these, but I'm not hopeful they're going to get there soon enough. So can you, one, tell us if there's any budgetary needs in order to help fight that? And number two is, any more concrete measures we can be taking right now as a city, putting aside the other levels of government, to help combat those and to help create a safer environment right now for people who are rightfully scared about what's going to happen in their building with the growing crisis of this? And I just wanted to ask a, a sort of addendum to that question, which is, I have two bills, which are, you, I think you know about. One is a kind of rebate swap-in program. The second is to create, mandate that the delivery companies give fireproof containers to the delivery workers to help contain fires and create a safe environment. So I wanted to know if you have any opinion on those pieces of legislation at this point?
Yes, see if I can take these in order. So on funding, we are, you know, because this has arisen so suddenly, we, we have the funding right now that was already existing in our budget in terms of doing outreach and enforcement. We are looking at, given that this is continually increasing, we are going to be looking at between this hearing and, and our next one, whether or not there are additional resources that we might need if this continues at the same pace. So we will double back to the committee on that. One thing I would say is that, you know, education in communities is often one of the most important pieces. It's also certain communities where these seem to be concentrated. And in past years, I know certain council members have put additional funding just for public education for their district. That's something that can always be helpful, and especially for folks where this is happening often in their districts. We'd be happy to talk to the individual council members about whether or not designating certain, certain funds for local education makes sense this year, and we can certainly do that. When it comes to, you know, sort of what we can do, I agree with you completely that the regulation matters, and the regulation will make a difference, right? We've seen this with other consumer electronics before, that within a few years, the regulation does stop these very dangerous fires. The question is, what do we do in those intervening years, right? We know that these bikes are in people's homes right now, and we have no way of knowing, especially when it's in an individual home, that's not a place we can inspect. So we don't know whether or not that's a UL certified bike or not, and we don't know how people are using them. So I really think that the community education part is really critical because we have to reach people who have a bike in their home right now. And I think that comes many ways. It comes working together, it comes working with community partners who might better be able to reach those in their district. It also comes with working with real estate, who has begun to reach out to us to acknowledge that this is a concern for them in their buildings. And then finally, when it comes to the legislation, you know, I haven't looked at the exact language, but I think that in, in spirit, it is certainly something that we need in particular because one of the things we've seen is that because people rely on these for their livelihood, there is a demand for some of these less safe bikes and batteries. And so we need to address that demand as well if we're going to continue to address decreasing the number of these that people have. It's only costs about 10 cents to get UL certification on a piece of consumer electronics, so it certainly shouldn't be a cost prohibitive. But again, we know people have these right now, and so unless there's a way to swap a safe battery for an unsafe one, we're going to keep seeing these. So we'd love to, you know, we'll look at the language with you, and we'd love to get, address that, the supply and demand issue as well.
Just a follow-up question. Earlier in your testimony, you had mentioned that when you are going to respond to a fire, it's helpful to know whether the place that you're responding to, and I think you could put into your system, has, or has the potential to be a more dangerous location because, because of the batteries. Is that residential locations where there's, like, what are the exact places that we're talking about here? And I assume some of them are just places where there's businesses or some concentration of batteries. And, and to that point, is there a, is there something further we should be doing on those places? The legislation Councilmember Feliz passed requires certification, you know, over the next few months of those. Should we be regulating the industry or requiring a license for those businesses that are going to be selling them so you have a better understanding of what you're, where you're headed when you are responding to a fire?
Yeah, I definitely think that's a conversation we should have. There's, there's two types of locations. One is a location where they should not be, those are not legal batteries or legal bikes. That's where you've seen the Bureau of Fire Prevention working with the fire marshals and the sheriff to go in and, and actually remove those dangerous conditions. That's when you see, I don't know if you saw the slide that I presented last Friday, but where there are hundreds of aftermarket batteries sitting on, on sort of like a wooden shelf in a garage. You know, those are not, those are not allowed under the fire code or the law, and so that's really an enforcement piece. But the other piece is that there are many companies who do have, you know, the legal use to, the legal right to use these batteries, all of these like scooter companies that you see proliferating around the city, and even electric cars. In that case, we are, we are going to each of those companies and asking them to tell us where they're keeping the batteries that they swap in and out. And even though those batteries are UL certified and are much safer, as you can imagine, if one bike can do such damage, as you saw in the Bronx, imagine what a warehouse full of batteries could do. And so we would really love to see a situation where any company that's operating and stores a lot, has to store a lot of these batteries somewhere in the city, that they let us know so that when the firefighters are responding, they know exactly what that danger is that they're responding to.
I'll just take my last, I think it's actually maybe even, we should even be going further. I think that if any place that has that many batteries stored in one place, we shouldn't just know about it. We should probably be trying to just take some steps to prevent having that many stored in one place or even prohibiting that because that fire that took place in Councilmember Feliz's district last week, two weeks ago last week, is a sign of where we're at right now, and I think that was one bike. And to have that many stored in one place should be, to me, should be prohibited.
Yeah, I agree. It's, it's two parts, right? If we know where they are, we can respond more safely, but if we know where they are, we can also go and we can actually have a conversation with that company about whether or not how they're storing them is safe in the first place, right? And that's very important to us. So, you know, we can have another conversation about legislation around that, but we agree that we really need to, we need to be having a lot more conversation with companies about how to store these safely and about how to let us know where they're being stored.
I just want to, before we continue, note that Councilmember Brewer has joined us.
Great, thank you. We're going to turn to Councilmember Holden, who's online, and then we're going to go to Councilmember Kagan after that. So Councilmember Holden, once you're unmuted, you could go ahead, sir. We have questions.
Yes, thank you, thank you. I believe, do you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner and Chiefs. Just a couple of questions. By the way, just on the battery issue, are there any batteries that are UL listed that could explode because they're improperly charged, they're using the wrong charger, or they're, they're not the right battery for that charger?
Yeah, so a UL certified battery, if it is misused or tampered with, can have that same risk of fire. And so we definitely want to... And so we definitely want to, A, educate the public on that. But I would also say that the regulations that we're asking for from the Consumer Product Safety Commission would make that much harder to do. So it would create like tamper-proof containers for these batteries, so people couldn't open them up and tamper with them. And it would also require devices to only be able to charge with the battery and the, and the charger that they came with. So those regulations, if they pass, will make what you're mentioning far harder to do and less likely.
And if we were to have inspectors to inspect locations, we'd have to probably double or triple the staff. Am I correct for inspectors?
I think we would eventually need more inspectors. You know, you're seeing, as we're going out, you're seeing we are finding more of these locations than we might have hoped or expected.
I just want a couple of questions on the budget. Let's, let's take, you know, I have a lot of very old firehouses. Most of them were built nearly part of the twentieth century. Are we, do we have a program, and how much capital expenses do we need to really kind of address a lot of the? I mean, every firehouse that I've gone into in my district has, has a host of problems, from mold to other issues to, you know, dilapidated or collapsing ceilings and so forth. Do we have a, a budget that we're identifying as how we can catch up to the upgrades?
So yeah, we do agree with you that having older buildings is a challenge, and it's something we're always trying to tackle on behalf of our members. I'm going to ask our budget director to speak to the funding.
Yes, absolutely. So our capital budget is about one point five billion dollars over a five-year period. So that's this fiscal year and the four out-years. And actually, at this point, particularly given recent budget adjustments that have added funding for facility renovations, our budget is about fifty-seven percent tied to our facilities. So in that one point five billion, we have eight hundred and sixty million dollars associated with renovating our facilities.
Okay, I'd like to put in my request for a couple of upgrades, but we'll get to that later. Does every firehouse now have a forcible entry simulator? Because I remember when I visited a few, they didn't have that.
Every firehouse does not have it, but the Fire Foundation actually funds those doors, and we're working with them and even, even the budget to make sure everybody has one. We also have a mobile training unit that goes to each firehouse with the door. So everybody gets a chance at, you know, sharpening their skills with the door.
Okay, great. It's an important piece of equipment. Doesn't seem that would be that expensive either for, for every house to have it. But thank you, thank you, Chief, for that. Okay, back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. And just to piggyback on what the council member was saying, Councilmember Holden, of the companies who have self-identified as charging large numbers of bikes and batteries, are they in compliance with fire code requirements like ventilation and fire suppression?
So it depends on the location. Sometimes, yes, sometimes not. You know, one of our goals is to help people be in compliance, right? So it's not just to shut them down, because that often, you know, both is harming small businesses, but also just means sometimes the, the batteries go elsewhere. So we are working with many of those companies on trying to store their devices more safely.
Thank you. And just because I realized that I, I didn't mention that when we spoke about the rigs that were taken out of, of service via a lawsuit. If we do not have the newer rigs by, by May third, which is the hard date, what, what is the procedure? What is the plan?
So there are, they, we look at which responses the rigs should be going to in order to lessen additional wear and tear on those that are older. And then, as I mentioned, we are imploring the companies to speed up their production of these rigs, and certainly can talk more with you guys offline about how we can all work to, to get them to do that.
Thank you. Yield further.
Thanks, Councilmember. Next, we'll hear from Councilmembers Kagan, Feliz, Riley, and Carr. Councilmember Kagan, may I go ahead?
Thank you, Chair, for hosting this important hearing. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chiefs. I would like to start with thanking every single firefighter, EMS, everyone who makes our city safer. Thank you very much. My question is about the mayor's proposal about moving some building fire safety inspections to DOB. So, status of this proposal, how do you feel about it, and is it still in place? Is it still in planning?
We are working with the mayor's office right now simply to review the functions of two units at DOB and FIRE, and just see how we can combine our resources. So that, we're looking at things like whether or not there's pieces of technology where both agencies can see plans at the same time, whether or not there are certain inspectors that cross-training would be helpful to them, and whether or not there's ways to streamline. Often, as you know, plans go back and forth between the two agencies, and that can be where additional time is added. So trying to figure out whether it's co-locating staff or, or taking technology that would actually streamline that system, so that in the backend, both the building inspectors and our inspectors could look at things at the same time. So that's the process that we're reviewing with the mayor's office right now, and that is, that is it. We're not looking at any next step.
So you're not eliminating any kind of fire, fire safety inspections by the department?
You said eliminating? No, we are, we are, we are not. Safety is always our number one priority, and for the mayor's office as well.
That's how it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we'll go to Councilmembers Feliz.
Thank you. Good morning. Good to see you all. Want to start by thanking all of you for the work that you do. Two weeks ago, many of us met in the Bronx under horrible circumstances. Horrible fire that destroyed our local neighborhood supermarket. And I want to thank all of you and your entire team for everything you did to make sure that that fire didn't continue to damage our community. Everything you did, including risking your own health, right? Because that was a lot of smoke. So we're very grateful and thankful for your work and service. Few questions about general capacity and work. How many fires have we had this year already? And how do these numbers compare to last year's fires at the same period?
So, year-to-date this year, basically, if you're talking about an all-hands fire, which is a serious fire, we had, this year, we had two hundred and ninety-three so far. Probably a few more, because this only goes January and February. But January, February last year, we had three hundred and six. So they usually fluctuate, you know, with, between ten and twenty year over year. But most of the time, unless something very unusual happens, the, the number seems to come out right around the same. And that's where we are this year so far.
Okay. And what about, let's say, 2019, when we didn't have that many lithium-ion battery fires? 2019 and 2020, what were the numbers like?
The, the number of all-hands fires was pretty much right around the same area. Somehow, that always works out, even for our individual companies. They know how many all-hands fires they go to each year. And when we do the statistics, somehow, it seems to always be right around the same number.
Got it. And how many fires have we had this year due to lithium-ion batteries? And how do those numbers compare to last year's numbers? And I know some of them are still on investigation. It takes time to fully investigate a fire, but I guess very rough numbers would be fine.
We have thirty-eight as of today. As you mentioned, some, some are still under investigation, but thirty-eight fires that at least we know as of today were caused by lithium-ion batteries. I should also say, you know, as the Chief is mentioning, year over year, we remain about the same. Winter, as you guys have heard us talk about, are our busiest months, and we do have emerging trends. So one thing we do after the winter months is look to see, you know, both how are we doing in terms of year over year, but also are there particular dangers confronting our members? Lithium-ion is one we all know about, but that's something that we do every year after we get sort of through the busy fire season, is to look at where we saw increases, whether that's geographically in certain types of fires, or even, you know, injuries to our members, and we, we do sort of an after-action. So that, you know, that's something, at our next hearing, we can talk about what this winter looked like compared to others.
Yeah, okay. So thirty-eight fires to date due to lithium-ion batteries. How many fires did we have last year, January and February?
For lithium-ion?
Yeah.
It's, well, so it's two-twenty for the year of 2022.
Two-twenty. Do you have numbers for the first two months and a half?
I don't, but I can get them for you. Yeah, I can do a comparison.
Okay, cool. Okay. And also, we've obviously had a rise in fires due to these batteries. Has that rise led to a need for additional firefighters?
As, I mean, as the Chief mentioned, we have something called minimum manning, which means that all of our companies need to be fully staffed at all times. And we have been doing that this year, using overtime to, to make up the gap.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. No more questions for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Feliz. Next, we'll hear from Councilmembers Riley and Carr.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chiefs. Just want to extend my gratitude, like the rest of my colleagues, on the great work that you do within our city and keeping our city safe. I think my questions are covered around diversity, and thank you for the first quarter's report I just received the last week. What steps has the department taken to recruit more people of color to become firefighters?
So, as you know, you know, the last recruitment campaign that we ran was the most diverse pool of applicants in department history. We have, we had a hiring freeze during COVID, and so what has been really essential is returning to that list and hiring off of it, because it is a diverse group of, of New York residents that are coming onto this job. And you, you see in our new fire classes that they are much more diverse than they used to be. So returning to that list is important. And then we are also preparing for our next recruitment campaign, so that will be next year. So we're taking the lessons we learned from the last successful one, trying to capitalize on those things that worked, trying to put resources into the areas that worked to recruit the most diverse parts of that list. So in terms of recruitment and retention, you know, we definitely see that we will capitalize off of our last successful recruitment campaign for the next one. And then, you know, what we've also been doing is increasing transparency in terms of how promotional tests are given and when they are given, so that we can see, as we have a more diverse group of entry-level firefighters, as they begin to rise through the ranks, they can rise to lieutenant, captain, battalion chief. And so last month, I believe, we released not only a schedule of all of our tests that are being given over the, the next decade or so, but also some more information and information sessions around how to prepare for a promotional exam, you know, what the different paths are in terms of both rising through leadership and taking on special assignments within the department.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is the length of service different for firefighters of color compared to white firefighters?
That I don't know, but we can get back to you. In terms of average years of service before they retire, yeah, we can find out.
Thank you. Do you guys do recruitment, starting in high schools and community of color? What I'm seeing is I'm going to high schools, and a lot of students don't know that there's a pathway to become a firefighter. I think you just need about fifteen college credits to become a firefighter. I know some seniors are taking college courses and getting college credits as well. Do you guys start in high schools specifically in communities of color?
We do. One thing that we did was focus groups before we ran our last recruitment campaign. And one thing that came out is that in almost every case, across all races and genders, people decide to get into this job early, often in high school. And so, you know, I think in a lot of ways, that makes sense. This is a very unique and very dangerous job, and those who go forward with it have a real commitment to public service from early on. So what we've done are a few things. We have our explorers program, which is a program that starts in high schools, actually in middle school in some cases. And it's in local New York City public schools. And so all of our explorer posts are concentrated in our most diverse communities, and we're looking to grow those, because that is a way for public school kids in New York City to get early interaction with the fire department and decide, you know, see what this job is about and see if public service is something that they want to pursue. We will also be launching our first-ever cadet program this year. And the cadets are sort of between high school and, and college is the, the age that we're targeting there, because you, you can't be a firefighter until you're twenty-one. And so there's sort of like a gap between high school and reaching that eligible age. So we're doing that as well. We also have an FDNY high school, which, again, we're also looking to, you know, always expand upon that and also just bring attention to it and the fact that this is a career that is available to you and that this is a school you can apply to if you're interested in pursuing a career of service. So I would say all around, yes, we very much would like to speak to young people. One initiative the mayor's office has also, also been incredibly helpful is just raising awareness about civil service. Often, what we find when we go into high school classrooms is explaining to a young person the civil service system. We're often the first person to have talked to them about that. But once somebody knows about it, there are many careers in city government that, you know, are available to them. And we love to see young New Yorkers pursue a career in public service. And so rather than do it agency by agency, we've been trying to collaborate with our other agencies so that as each of us is going in to talk about a career in public service, we can share that, that data and that knowledge with one another. And we, we think that will increase overall, all of our ability to be recruiting from our local high schools.
Thank you. Vacancies. How much vacancies does the department have currently right now?
In FIRE and EMS?
Yes, correct.
So I'll give you all of them. So for, for our uniformed headcount, right now, as of the, as of the start of March, we had three hundred and ninety-six vacancies across uniform titles. For EMS, although there are variations depending on which title you're looking at, overall, all EMS titles, we were only under-budgeted headcount by six. And at the start of March, for our civilian headcount, we were under-headcount by a hundred and fifty-three. Although I am happy to say that today, we actually had a class of fifty fire protection inspectors start, which will pretty dramatically bring down that number.
Thank you. Chair, just one more question, please. Diversity goes further than race. And uniformed members are ninety-nine male with only a hundred and thirty-nine women in un, in, excuse me, in uniform positions. Out of nearly eleven thousand jobs, how is the department recruiting more women to the job? And could funding for the United Women Firefighters Association be considered to conduct pre-training for women looking to apply and join the department?
Yeah, so when I was mentioning our last recruitment campaign, we, you know, we tripled the number of women applying, and we hope to continue to build on that number, so that we can see, you know, those numbers change over time, certainly. And I think that any, anything we can do to help young women looking at this for a career prepare is great, including the program that the United Women Firefighters run is a great one, and we know that it helps candidates prepare. I don't know if Commissioner Noonan wants to add anything to that.
Good morning. We actually just collaborated on a great event with the UWF, and we will continue to make sure that we're collaborating with them to bring awareness to their program. I think sometimes the women that are, that have taken the exam and that are candidates are not always as informed, right? The civil service process can be pretty daunting to most, to anyone that's going through it. But we actually just recently did an event, reaching out to candidates that are coming up on the next band. So it's about four hundred female candidates that are there. And we had a pretty decent turnout of women that were in person and also live streaming. And, you know, they got to, to learn a lot about the women's experience and what resources the UWF will provide for them to get fit, and as well as what the fire department. We have various programs that are available to candidates that will be available to them, whether it's at the Fire Academy or working out at local parks and rec centers. You know, the opportunity is there, and it's just getting them to get that commitment. Them showing up to the room and them being available on a live stream just shows that they're, they're ready. And we're going to make sure that we support them along the way.
Thank you. And also, I just want to share, Councilmember Holden brought up something very important about the fire stations. I'm having issues also in my district. I literally was just looking at discretionary lists of capital improvements to my firehouses in my community. So we'd love to speak with you further about it. Thank you, Chair, for the extra time.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Carr, followed by Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you, Chair Ariola, for presiding over this important hearing. Commissioner, good to see you. Chief, pleasure as always. I want to talk a little bit about the fifth man. I know the Chair was asking about that earlier, and I know that there's a, a belief of preference that they're really only warranted where you have a lot of multifamily dwellings, bigger buildings. But we do have our share of that in Staten Island, and so I was just wondering where, if any, are there fifth-man placed in any companies in the borough of Staten Island? And I'll be representing Southern Brooklyn in the new term, so Bay Ridge, Deiker Heights, Bensonhurst, Bath Beach. If you could shed any light on that as well.
In Staten Island, we have two five firefighter engine companies, one fifty-eight in Mariner's Harbor. And also, we have Squad Eight now, which operates as an engine company in their first two area. We, you know, we're always looking, and the south portion of Brooklyn also has three five, five firefighter engines.
Okay, appreciate that. I mean, listen, I continue to think we need more out in Staten Island. There's always construction ongoing, particularly in the North Shore. We're going to see a lot more multifamily dwellings erected, and I think that's going to put strain on the companies that you already have. And, and there are, you know, large horizontal developments in the South Shore Mid-Island, and I think that that's another place, another criteria that maybe we can consider for the future when you're trying to place a fifth man in specific companies. But I, I want to turn to battery energy storage systems. This is another big topic. We had one that was attempted to be sited in my district at the same site as a church and two- We had one that was attempted to be sited in my district at the same site as a church and two schools in the vicinity. And folks are concerned about the, the safety of that and what is the appropriate proximity to a residential community. And then the land use question, which is really kind of beyond just the safety issue is where is it best for us to put these that we're not taking space away from residential or commercial development? So if you could speak to at least the safety side, where the department thinks that these are the most appropriate places for these kinds of installations to be?
Yeah, I can speak to how we're looking at this and if there's more we need to look at, you know, as you mentioned, this is emerging, just like e-bikes. You know, the difference I would say is that these energy storage systems, these are regulated. So we're not talking about some of the, the issues we have with e-bikes where they're not regulated, not certified. That being said, they could present similar dangers and also like much technology, you know, we see them cropping up before we've necessarily had a chance to really review from either a safety or an operational perspective, how we would tackle a fire if it were to occur in one of them. So we're doing a few things and we love to work with you more on this because we do understand that this is an emerging green technology and it does have some advantages, right? But we need to understand what the safety impacts are before we can really say where they should be and, and what they should look like. But we're doing a few things. We have a working group started by our Chief of Fire Prevention, who's now our Chief of Training, specifically looking at this issue. So they're talking to the other large fire departments along the country. We also work with the Department of Homeland Security that has a lab here in New York City. They are especially helpful because they can provide us with not only certain experts on green technology that we don't have on staff who can tell us a little bit more about how these work, but they can actually provide training environments so we can actually work with these and see what happens. You know, we can set them on fire and see what happens. And we are also working with major car manufacturers like Tesla, who also are going to have, you know, large numbers of these batteries as well. So we are aware this is emerging, we are looking at it. I would say that there's not a definitive answer yet, but we would like to be very involved in how they unfold to make sure that at the same time we're achieving these green energy goals, that we're doing it safely.
No, I appreciate that and I think that these things can be wonderful for the grid if we only cite them in the right places.
Yeah.
And I think the lesson learned from me from this most recent example is but for the fact that this would have required a BSA variance, the only thing that would have stood between this installation happening is the permitting and approval process that the FDNY employs. And so I'm glad that we're thinking about it and I love to get into that conversation with you because I love to really understand what's going to inform your judgment moving forward because I've already heard of a couple of other sites where they almost decided to put them, there would have been no BSA case there. So it literally would have just been your, your departmental rules that came into play here, so.
Yeah, we'd be happy, there are many experts in fire operations who are working on this, we'd be happy to connect you with them. And I would say, as you mentioned, it also really matters where they are, right? So the density in Staten Island and where it may be placed there might be very different than, you know, where they're putting these in Manhattan. That could make a difference in terms of whether or not we say yes or no or make modifications. So we definitely should be having a lot of conversation because as you mentioned, this can be a good thing. It's certainly emerging. We want to get ahead of it. But it does have potential risks that we need to evaluate.
Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thanks Councilmember. Next we'll hear from Councilmember De La Rosa.
Thank you Chair and thank you Commissioner and the entire team for being here. I wanted to just follow up. I know that the lithium ion batteries has been a topic of conversation and even in my own district, we've had a few fires. I wanted to ask you if you saw any other patterns as root causes for structural fires across the city? Is there anything else besides the batteries that you're seeing are causing the majority of the fires?
So every year, our fire marshals do actually release the top causes of fires. I haven't looked at them for this winter, but typically they are electrical, smoking, often open flame or fire. So the chief may have a little bit more, but every year we do actually release those causes for that reason so that we can target education and we'd be happy to work with you, even at a district level. Might be different district by district. We'd be happy to work with you on that.
Yes, as Commissioner stated, the Bureau of Fire Investigation comes up with the leading causes. And I will say that, you know, usually electrical is always number one, careless smoking, electric, you know, appliances. But lithium ion batteries now has reached into that top four. So it is emerging as one of the lead causes of fires, but all the others are pretty much the same year over year, but this is an outlier.
Thank you Chief. I also wanted to ask about the inspection personnel reduction for inspectors. And I know I think Councilmember Riley asked a little bit about that. One of the things we've seen and we continue to see is delays in getting like fire reports. Sometimes when we're trying to offer constituents services post-fire, it's difficult if they don't have a fire report. And so I wanted to ask a little bit about the plans for increasing staffing levels. We're all concerned across the board with agency staffing. And if there's a, if you all have a plan in place for victim support or services in the cases where fire reports may be delayed. I know we all work very closely with the Red Cross and it's very helpful to have them on the ground time after time, so give them a little shout out here today. But is there anything else that we can expect as far as staffing around inspections and addressing the delays in fire reports?
Yeah, as you mentioned, there's tremendous, you know, help that we get from both Red Cross and the Office of Emergency Management. You know, they really follow up with local residents and make sure there's wraparound support for as long as they needed and we're very grateful for that. They also in many cases, and this is certainly a connection we can make with you, flag for us whether or not a report is needed in an expedient manner, especially if it has to do with like insurance or relocating the residents. So that's something we can work with you to make sure that the residents are getting those in the time, in the time they need them. In terms of inspektional headcount, I'll let Commissioner Kristoff speak to that.
Sure. So just to recap, headcount for the Bureau of Fire Prevention. So we are budgeted for five hundred and seventy-three positions in that bureau. And as of the start of March, we had four hundred and ninety-two, which left us with eighty-one vacancies. Though as I noted earlier, that was at the beginning of March and actually today, we had a class of fifty fire protection inspectors start, which is bringing that, that number down pretty significantly. So the, the more recent civilian headcount reductions did not touch our number of fire protection inspectors. But since we do hire them in classes, it can be very bumpy, you know, depending on when you're looking at the headcount.
Thank you. As long as we're talking about hiring. In December of 2014, the Fire Department administered a written promotional exam for the rank of captain, list fifty-five oh seven. It was published in August of 2015 with the first promotions utilizing that list occurring in September of 2016. Due to COVID-related delays, the most recent exam was given on December 2021, in December of 2021, with the list being published in January of 2023. What is the average life cycle of an FDNY captain's test list?
So typically, based on state's civil service rules, all lists are active for four years unless you run out of names on them and then you can give another exam. COVID, like so many other things, extended the life of our lists under, you know, emergency requirements. And so almost all of our lists, especially the lieutenant and captain's exam, had a significantly longer number of years of being utilized in the department than average. Now that we have given finally post-COVID a captain and lieutenant's exam, we're going to be getting back on that four-year cycle. As I had mentioned, we actually published the schedule for the next eight to ten years of when those exams will be given so that people can actually plan their careers accordingly and anticipate when either a list will expire or a new test will be given.
So does that new exam then expire list five, fifty-five oh seven and the people who are currently on it but not promoted?
The old list has expired, yeah. We promoted captains off of the new list about six weeks ago. And the day that the new list becomes active, the, the old one becomes inactive and no longer usable.
Do you know how many individuals were promoted from that list?
I believe it was five sixty-three, which over a four-year average is normally somewhere in the four hundred range. So the extension, actually, we promoted an additional approximately a hundred and sixty-five or so.
And is there a current shortage of captains at the, in the FDNY?
No, with our last promotion, we're pretty much, you know, right about where we should be.
Okay. Twenty-five special operation support companies were trained to assist special operation units of the FDNY. What is the budget for these companies and is all their equipment up to date?
The sock support ladder companies, the twenty-five additional, I can't speak to the budget, if Lizette knows that, but we could get that for you. Yes, they, they receive refresher training, you know, throughout the year and all of the equipment is evaluated, you know, just about every week, you know, they're, they're working with this equipment. And they respond to anything where we need additional help for technical rescue or collapse or anything like that. They, they assist our rescue companies and squad companies.
And that is, sorry to interrupt. Also, you had asked about grant funding. That is one area that grant funding pays for a lot of the training that those companies receive.
And how many rigs are spare, of spare apparatus that are currently inactive service?
Spare apparatus in service?
That, that varies day by day, depending on how many, you know, are mechanically out of service. So we don't have a hard number on that. I could look and see what we have today.
All right, we'll get back to you on that. In February of 2021, local laws eighteen forty-nine A and eighteen fifty-two A were passed by the council requiring movie productions to notify the Fire Department of filming locations and requiring a fire safety marshal present on all sets at all times. How many of these positions are budgeted for and how many positions have been filled?
We'd actually have to get that for you. I'm not sure how many were budgeted and filled. We can get that. We, I should say, we have been working closely with the mayor's office of media and entertainment to make sure that we are, not, not just ready, but it's incredibly important for the fire companies, as you know, especially after we tragically lost Mike Davidson. So they've been working very closely with operations to make sure that those notifications are going out in a, in a timely manner. But we'll get you those exact numbers on the headcount.
Okay, great. And with, as we know, the mayor lifting the mandates on municipal employees, how many members that were terminated, resigned or retired have returned to the department now that the vaccine mandate has been lifted?
So we're still in the midst of processing folks, so when we're close to done or done, we can give you the total numbers. I, I should say that in most cases, we are looking to bring people back, so except in some extenuating circumstances, most people we, we hope to bring back. So we can give you the exact number once we've worked through the paperwork for, for everyone who's applied.
And when you do that outreach, you feel that you get mostly positive feedback and, and express desire to come back?
Yeah, I mean, we've had a number, I, I don't know what the, the delta is out of how many who left, but we have had a number of members definitely coming forward, looking to come back.
And just what type of outreach was done to inform members that had separated from the department of the process to return to work?
So there was both city outreach as well as departmental outreach. We could tell you exactly how they did that, but there was a couple methods for, for reaching out and I would say the unions have very much been very helpful for us here and have been advocates and have been making sure their members know and bringing cases forward to the extent that we were not aware that that member was wanting to come back.
Yeah, and I think special attention needs to be really applied to those that chose to retire because they may not be included in the active list. So that might be something you just want to put on your radar.
Absolutely.
So any other questions from?
Next, we'll go to Councilmember Brewer and then Councilwoman Schulman has another question as well.
Thank you very much. I always want to thank Jason Shelley too, because even when he's on vacation, he answers phone calls. I appreciate that.
He's in Antarctica of all places.
I appreciate it. I know you're sick of the batteries, but I do appreciate all the work you're doing. It's a hard situation because we want batteries to be safe and then at the same time, the sixty-five deliveries are now having troubles finding a place to charge. So my question is, how many shops have you been to? Is it complaint-based or is it something that you're doing proactively? And then, do you have any suggestions about this charging problem?
So it is a complaint-based. I will reiterate something that our marshals say all the time, which is we're really not looking to crack down on small businesses here. We're helping to make them safer. And in some cases, we simply have to crack down. The scenario is too dangerous to let it continue. But in most cases, our marshals are going in, trying to inform the business owner of why this is unsafe and, and make sure that they are operating safely. You know, really what we want is for small businesses to be able to keep operating and for people to be using these batteries safely. So we're going to continue to do that. I think when it comes to charging, it's similar to what I mentioned earlier about the sort of supply and demand issues that are outside of the FDNY's purview. You know, we don't set up safe charging, but what I would say is that we recognize that due to the, you know, need for so many of these people to rely on these bikes for their livelihood, that we definitely believe there has to be, whether it's a way to get safer batteries, battery exchange, safe charging, that those things need to happen in order to make sure that those folks who rely on these bikes have another alternative than charging them in their home.
Could you do a plugin at some of your fire stations?
That I don't know. We'd have to look at. What I would say though is there, there is at least one location that we worked, the deliveries does put together that I think has both facilities for, for changing and using the bathroom and also has charging. I know that's only one, so it's not enough, but it's certainly a model that we could work with the city on.
But I think we should look at police stations and fire stations, just because, and you know, a little bit here and a little bit there will assist in terms of then it would be safe, so something to think about.
You can definitely take a look.
The other thing is fire sirens. And that's not necessarily a budget issue. Do you keep track of how many three-one-one calls you get about loud sirens, mostly on ambulances? Because I get hundreds.
We do get reports on those. We do work with our fire and EMS companies to make sure they're complying with when, when to use those sirens and when not to. I would say they are largely compliant. The places we get the most, we see the greatest volume of three-one-one complaints is for folks who live around a hospital for some obvious reasons or around a fire station.
Westsiders don't have to live around a hospital to complain.
Fair enough.
So I, I'm just saying, I'm looking at this issue, but I think we need to look at not just less of it, but also the quality of it. Something to think about. It is a constant. My guess is you have hundreds and hundreds of complaints.
Yeah, we're always happy to work with you. You know, I would say obviously when we're using our lights and sirens, it is because there's an emergency and, and it is necessary for our members to respond safely. But we have looked at, in particular, over the last couple of years, we actually changed over in most of our ambulances the type of siren to something called a rumbler, which is
I am only too familiar with it.
supposed to be less, you know.
Yes, I'm for a rumbler.
Okay, we, we are as well.
I've been in with the police department and I believe in the rumbler. Just finally on the firehouses, so it would be helpful for us who have put in money, not necessarily the full amount that's needed, to know the status of what it is that is still needed for some of the firehouses to whatever upgrade is appropriate.
Yeah, we would love to give you, each of you a council by council breakdown, yeah.
Okay. And then just finally, just, I know you said there are fifty more fire prevention, so, but what's the total number of people in fire prevention? And what, now with the fifty, that's great. Are there still vacancies? Fire prevention is so important.
Yeah, so to recap the overall number, the budget is five hundred and seventy-three. And the active before the fifty was four hundred and ninety-two.
So you're getting close?
We're getting really close.
Okay, thank you very much. Fire stations to charge.
Okay, Councilwoman Schulman has another question and then we'll go back to the Chair to finish off. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And I appreciate you working with the small businesses. There is some by me that offline we'll talk about that have a number of bikes in them, that have batteries and things like that. But in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, the department issued only two hundred and twenty summonses compared to seven thousand nine hundred in fiscal two thousand eighteen. This number has been on a constant downtrend for the past five years. What is the reasoning behind this?
I believe you're speaking about criminal, criminal summonses. And we, we have changed over to giving what's called an FDNY summons, which is much more friendly to, to business. And it's also something that we follow up on ourselves, so that is, we're giving just as many, it's just not a criminal summons in, in most cases.
Can we, can we as council members arrange to have someone come out and speak with the small businesses in our districts about what they need to do and all that? Because I don't think that that's been done, at least in my district, so.
Sure. We're a fire safety education unit or is always available. You can make an inquiry and we could set up some type of an event.
Okay. And one other question. The mayor announced a plan for the Department of Buildings to develop, standardize and implement a citywide building code for alteration of existing residential and commercial buildings. Has FDNY had any input or communication with the standardization of the building code?
Yes, of course. We're always working with the, you know, Department of Buildings, making sure the fire code, which we, we regulate and, and the building code doesn't have any redundancies or contradictions. So yes, we're always working together on that.
And I would also just like to, it's just a statement, like to know if there are any issues, like for example, some agencies don't talk to each other. That happens occasionally. And there are things that are done in my district where I talk to the local engine company, which is three fifteen, and they say nobody told them about it, nobody spoke to them and all that. So if we could just make sure that that's done on a consistent, because I want to be I want to be helpful, I mean, it's, they have issues in terms of some of the street, some street issues, there's going to be a redesign of Queens Boulevard at some point, I want to make sure the FDNY is a part of that in terms of the conversation, so we make sure that people can stay safe.
Yes, we're making an effort to work closer with DOT, to get in on the ground floor before these projects get off and running, so yeah, there is an effort to get in there.
And I'm happy to help in that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to amplify what Councilmember Schulman was saying about agencies talking to one another, if you were at the completely budgeted 170 more fire inspectors and fire prevention can eliminate all wait times tomorrow, do you still think that there would be conversation about the DOB and the fire inspectors having any type of, you know, overlapping responsibilities?
I think what I'd say is that there are always, there's always more collaboration we can have between agencies, right? And I actually think collaboration is essential, you know, the way the system works now is very linear, so DOB might know when a project is coming in, and we may not know until that project reaches our desk that that was in the works, and so one of the big pieces of collaboration we're trying to work on is so that our technology systems talk to one another, so that we can see things coming down the pipeline. And I think that's the sort of collaboration, the sort of desiloing of agencies that will make that next step, that even once you have all of your staff, as you pointed out, you may be able to eliminate the backlog, but there are some things that can just make it more efficient for the end user, to feel like they only have to go talk to one of those agencies, and that agency can have an answer for both agencies, and I think that's just a lot of collaboration, it's using the same technology and making sure the staff can consistently talk to one another about, especially major projects coming down the pipeline.
Collaboration is everything between the agencies, but I think that specific responsibility should remain with the experts within those agencies, and the collaboration continue. I'd like to change gears now to the BE HEARD program, advocates said the latest numbers indicate that the program has performed worse over time rather than improving, they said response times were longer, and there were fewer calls routed to BE HEARD in recent months, according to the review of previously released reports, which have been removed from the program's website. In 2022, do you know how many mental health 911 calls were made in BE HEARD's coverage area?
So I'm going to pass it over to the chief of EMS for those specific numbers, but do just want to say that this is a pilot program, it has shown to be effective by its main metric, which is getting people into long-term care, so that they aren't back in the system. And as we've expanded the pilot, it does mean that response times initially will get a little bit longer, because we're just expanding the geographic area, but we are training additional units, and so, you know, eventually, as the pilot becomes a larger program, you will see those numbers go back down, it's just the nature of a pilot, that as we expand it a little bit, we do see response times go up, but I would say, when it comes to mental health calls, that response time is not seen as a, you know, particularly negative indicator, we are still getting to these calls much faster than, you know, any specialized resources have before, and our main metric is seeing whether or not it actually helps people get into long-term care, which it is, but I'll have the chief speak specifically about the numbers.
Excuse me, my records show for 2022, we responded to, sorry, 1,729 calls were routed to us for BE HEARD to respond to, and they responded to 73% of those calls.
How many of those calls were routed to?
Seventy-three, correct.
So what is the average response time for BE HEARD to, once they get a call?
So BE HEARD is a low acuity call type, it's a priority, it's a priority number seven, so there's no lights and sirens in respect to that call type, so on average, the call type is about 10 minutes, 10 to 12.
So the plan is to expand the program, not decrease the program?
Correct, the plan is with working with the administration to expand the program.
And that's even though it's really, even though it's a pilot program, it is not showing to be as effective as we had wanted it to be when it first came into being?
Yeah, we are showing that it is effective on the main measure that we wanted it to be, and so we are expanding it slowly, so that we can keep track of how effective it is on other fronts, but we are seeing that it is getting people out of the emergency system and into long-term mental health care, and that is the main point of the program, but we will continue to expand it, to monitor it, and report back on where, you know, where it's successful and where we need some additional resources.
Okay, then, as long as we're talking about expanding programs, let's talk about our EMS rate increases. The department published a proposal Tuesday to hike its rate by 54% for basic life support ambulance services through the 911 system, from $900 to $1,385. The proposed fee schedule also calls for additional charge of $20 per mile, up from $15 per mile. What are the current rates for those whose hikes are planned?
You're asking what the current rates are in comparison to the new rates? So the current basic life support rate is $900, and that would go up to $1,385. The ALS-1 rate is currently $1,525, and that would be going up to $1,680. The current ALS-2 rate is $1,625, that goes up to $1,692, and the other rate that's changing is mileage, which goes from $15 to $20.
And will this have an effect on low-income families who may need these services?
So for folks who have insurance, you know, this wouldn't impact them, so we will work with what we receive from insurers. For patients that are self-pay and don't have insurance coverage, if they cannot pay, we actually have a charity care program based on income, so they can apply as part of that. Additionally, we have a settlement program for those folks who can pay, but perhaps not the full amount, that settlement program, we have in coordination with the controller's office, we have an MOU with them that authorizes us to make settlements.
And have passed, when will they go into effect?
So there is a public hearing coming up on March 24th, and then post that public hearing, there is a finalization of the rule, which will once again be published in the city record, and normally it's 30 days from that, so probably around May, although it does depend on the exact date that the final rule is published.
Okay, and the unions are representing EMTs, paramedics, EMS officers, they're currently suing the FDNY and the city after federal government found that EMS first responders are being discriminated against, the suit alleges that EMS workers, 55% of whom are non-white, carry out similar duties to the firefighters for far less pay. I'm asking, can the FDNY make statements about this pending litigation?
So I can't make statements about pending litigation, I will just say that, as you know, this administration has always advocated for our EMTs and paramedics in collective bargaining, it did result in a substantial increase in their last contract, of course, there's more to be done, and we will be as involved as we were last time in these upcoming collective bargaining agreements.
And did the FDNY believe EMS contract wage increase was enough to qualify as pay parity in the last negotiation?
I don't think we've gotten to parity, but I do think that it was a historic increase, and I think that is important to note, and we have to keep going with that same level of advocacy.
Any other questions from our colleagues? Okay, so once again, I'd like to thank Commissioner Kavanaugh and our firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, and the department's civilian staff for the work they do, and I would also like to thank, once again, our hard-working financial analyst, Tanvir Singh, our unit head, Jack Story, council committee, Josh Kingsley, policy analyst, Will Hungash, and my chief of staff, Phyllis Inserillo, and we will now go to public testimony.
Great, thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you.
You all are free to go. As a sort of housekeeping note, we have NISM coming at 12:30. In the interim, we're going to ask a panel of EMS kind of labor folks to come up and speak in the interim period. NISM will then go at 12:30, and we will turn to the rest of the public after NISM testifies. So for Local 2507, we have Michael Reardon, Orin Barzelay, and Daryl Chalmers. So we'll just do a quick panel, we'll do a panel here before NISM is able to start testifying, and then we'll go to the rest of the public after NISM. Thank you, folks, thanks. You all may begin, whoever wants to go first, you could give testimony, then we could ask questions after, all of you guys go speak.
Great, thank you. Good morning, committee chairperson and honorable council members. My name is Orin Barzelay, I'm a 28-year veteran of FDNY EMS. I am also the president of EMS Local 2507. I am here today to speak on behalf of more than 4,000 uniformed FDNY EMTs, paramedics, and fire inspectors. New York EMTs serving the most renowned fire department in the country, actually, we are the most renowned in the entire world. And we are tasked with responding to an incredible number of emergencies each year. In 2022, EMS responded to 1.58 million medical emergencies, and according to the mayor's office, this is 100,000 increase of emergency medical calls from 2021. I am here today to spotlight very considerate issues for our EMTs, who despite their pivotal role in serving and protecting New Yorkers, we are horrifically supported with resources from our city government. I'll start with EMS pay disparity, this has been an ongoing crisis for years. We make fractions of our peer first responders. EMS members are paid about 40% less than New York's other's great first responder agencies, which they rightfully earned and deserve. Our FDNY EMTs and paramedics answer a high portion of FDNY 911 emergencies, yet our operating budget is not commensurate. Those poverty wages and truly difficult work conditions result in EMS losing an average of 30% of new hirees within three years and 50% within five years. Look at it another way, the city of New York spends a fortune, millions of dollars, training our EMS medical professionals, and pays them so little that they leave in droves for jobs in other cities or with private companies, easily making 20,000 to 30,000 more per year. New York City spends $5 million a day on illegal immigrants, while I understand this is a sensitive subject, after all, we're talking about people. We find millions of dollars for all sorts of projects, I don't understand how we can't find $20 million a year to fix the EMS pay issue in the FDNY's budget. We are getting clobbered out there, physically. EMT assaults are at an all-time high, doubling in the last year, and many hundreds of our members are not even reporting them. Why bother due to a lack of any action at all by both the department and the city? When we arrive at the scene of an emergency, we don't carry guns like the NYPD, we don't have access like our brothers on the fireside, we roll up on the scene at an emergency with a doctor's bag to provide medical care. What is the city going to fix this crisis? City Hall, for instance, its employer is responsible to provide protection, that protection of our members is not happening right now. EMS is totally and completely starved of necessary resources to allow us to work safe and protect the city's citizen at the same time. In the past five years, two of our members were murdered while performing their duties. We still have crews going out on their own without a second provider. Across the five boroughs, EMS has only two bariatric units, one in Queens and one in Brooklyn, for extra-heavy patients. So if a patient is too large for a traditional ambulance in the Bronx on Manhattan or Staten Island, they must wait for one or two to be available and arrive on the scene. When someone has a stroke or a heart attack, every second counts. This situation is simply an embarrassment for a city that prides itself on being a tourism and culture mecca of our nation. Some might tell you this doesn't contribute to delays, yet when EMTs confirm that the patient needs a larger stretcher and accommodation, it takes away valuable time. These issues are only made up by worse, made up worse by the EMS bureau's hurried staffing problems. The department has previously testified to you that EMS has a headcount of over 100 EMTs and a headcount under 100 in paramedics. How would the headcount be over when an ambulance citywide are so backlogged? Worse of them are all emergency medical calls in the Bronx. In fact, it is daily or hourly occurrence that units from other boroughs must constantly be sent across one of the bridges for redeployment in the Bronx. EMS is so behind short staff that you would think with our call volume reaching 5,000 calls a day, that the department would take steps to increase resources. The department is actively deleting ambulances from the 911 system. In April of 2021, we ran approximately 185 24-hour units. By April 1st of this year, the number of units will be reduced to 166, thereby reducing the units in our city by 19 tours. I must make it clear that this was implemented by our previous chief, Bonseigneur, and chief Bastilli, this has nothing to do with Chief Mike Fields. Less ambulances in the streets means an increase in response times, they plan to do this specifically in lower-income communities, especially where FDNY EMS doesn't have the manpower. Being poor is not criminal, our city's poorer residents and poorer neighborhoods should not be ignored and taken for granted. True call volumes versus current misleading statistics, EMTs are dealing with record call volumes every day, but the way they count, measure, and report emergency calls to this honorable legislative body and to the taxpayer would likely not be considered kosher with any true statistician or mathematician. If FDNY goes on an emergency call involving multiple patients, such as the fatal Twin Park fire with 50 patients needing medical care and 50 ambulances, that is only counted as one emergency. There is clearly a statistical disconnect, if reported correctly, EMS runs for the year could be well over 2 million emergencies. I'm almost finished.
Okay.
EMS work facilities have been cutting-edge back in the horse and buggy days, we have addressed this next crisis of massive underinvestment in EMS services with the council before, but it bears repeating, the rotting and decaying infrastructure of where EMS staff work is relic to the administration of U.S. President William McKinley, he was Teddy Roosevelt's predecessor in the White House. Since the merger with FDNY EMS 27 years ago, there has been a consistent lack of reinvestment in our people, the tools, and the places need to do our job effectively. In that merger, we will promise 70 stations, that has yet to come to fruition. Actual pay parity must be a reality, for sake of our members, we hope that true pay parity will be addressed rapidly by the mayor and his council, as he's honored the mayor promised during his election campaign. How fair is it when our city's medical first responders make 40% less than members of the police and the other FDNY members? The dedicated women and men of EMS and the citizens we are sworn to protect deserve better than we have been subject to. It's time to make FDNY EMS more central to the strategic planning, budgeting of the greatest fire department in the world, but perhaps it's time we evolve that thinking to also consider the truly great work of our EMTs, paramedics, and fire inspectors. Thank you.
Thank you, Orin, free testimony, and as you know, this
And as you know, this city council last year fought hard for pay parity, and unfortunately, the, the governor vetoed it, so, but we will be revisiting that and sending it right back up to the state, so thank you.
Thank you.
And just, I ask everyone to please, because we have to get NISIM in, just try and stay within the frame, frame time of your, your testimony. Thank you. Your public testimony is on.
So, um, thank you, city council members, for letting us have, have a chance to speak. Uh, so I'm just going to speak, I'm Daryl Chalmers, I'm on the executive board for the Uniform Fire Protection Inspectors, part of Local Twenty Five Oh Seven with the EMTs and paramedics. And I just want, I just want to step on something that was said. The administration made statements of about the, uh, task force. With the task force, with the battery task force, it's the fire protection inspectors who are actually out there doing these inspections. The sheriff's department went out with us only once. Uh, the fire marshals are actually the supervisors with us, which they do an outstanding job. And what we do is if we find these places, we also let the administrative company, the engine companies, the truck companies, the firehouses, because of the great work that the firefighters do, we let them know exactly where this is and how many violations. So as far as violations are concerned, we've visited over, I'm just going to give quick numbers, I'm not going to give you the exact number, but it's o, over ninety-eight places. We've written eighty-four summonses, and we've wrote, and we've written two hundred FDNY summonses, seventy-two violations, uh, criminal summons, which is where you can go to jail, possibly, is seventeen. And LPG, we picked up, uh, a lot of LPG at these different places where people are storing these batteries illegally. And, um, so I just wanted to clarify that fact, that the fire inspectors, our job out there is to make sure it's safe for the public and also make sure it's safe for the firefighters and the EMTs, as they're doing their job. That's always been our job. Uh, another topic I want to step on is that the Department of Labor for the United States of our, of our country states that the work that we do as fire protection inspectors, that we are first responders. That's what the United States says. That's what our government says. And another thing I want to step on is the fact, when Orrin, our president, was talking about the budget and being treated fair as far as EMS's, the work that they do, they should be paid parity, and let me explain why. Uniform, and I've got this from city council, when I did this back in two thousand and five. Uniform status was given to the firefighters back in the sixties because a firefighter wanted to start his own bargaining sep, uh, certificate separate from the rest of the civilian force. Firefighters got it in the sixties, PD followed behind them, corrections followed behind them, sanitation's got theirs in nineteen seventy-nine after the strike of seventy-five. EMS got theirs in two thousand, we got ours in two thousand and five. When you read the local laws, it gives clearly states firefighter, correction officers, sanitation. It says, gives all the uniform titles, and at the same time, it says that EMS paramedics, paramedics are uniform members of the city of New York. So the question is, why aren't they given the same bargaining rights as the rest of the uniform force with the great work that they do and the great work that we do? And remember, the fire inspectors are peace officers and so are the firefighters. So that's all I want to say. I know Mike Reardon, my partner, wants to step on the numbers because I think they are incorrect on some of the numbers. They were saying as far as membership in the fire department, so Chief Mike Reardon's going to take that.
Thank you for your testimony.
Mm-hmm.
Good morning, council members. I appreciate you allowing me here today to speak on behalf of our men and women in the Bureau of Fire Prevention. I also sit on the executive board for Twenty Five Oh Seven EMS Paramedics and Fire Inspectors. Uh, I have some information here today. Basically, uh, back in two thousand and eight, we, uh, had a, uh, new needs put in, and when a new fire code was presented, uh, to no avail. Back in two thousand and fourteen, we also, when the fire code was changed again in two thousand and fourteen, we also asked for new needs, which we never got. Again, back in two thousand and twenty-two, new needs was asked for again, and to no avail. Obviously, we're down a lot of people. They had stated that we have five hundred and something inspectors, I couldn't clearly hear what they said. Right now, we have a total of three hundred and thirty-one fire prevention inspectors. We're not over five, uh, over five hundred. A lot of these units, especially the one unit that's handling these lithium batteries, they're, they're slated for ten inspectors, they have four. They're operating right now with only four inspectors in that unit, and it, they're supposed to have at least ten. So I gave you a, a list of the, all the inspectors listed in the Bureau of Fire Prevention. Those, all of those checkmarks are for everybody that is in Twenty Five Oh Seven. Uh, the other units are tech management units, which does plan review, I did not include because they're not under Twenty Five Oh Seven. Also, the, um, fire alarm unit is also, that's Local Three, I did not include them. I'm just including the fire inspectors. I thank you for your time.
And I just want to make a note, the reason why Chief Reardon is, uh, saying only Twenty Five Oh Seven, because remember, the members of Twenty Five Oh Seven, those fire protection inspectors who wear uniforms are trained at fire matics. So what, what that means is, we understand second means of vigorous, we understand fire safety. The other units, they do outstanding work, but they don't, they don't look at things the way we look at it. We look at it the same way to keep the firefighters and the public safe. So that's where we're trained at that, and I'll use the term fire matics. Fire lieutenants, captains, firefighters, and fire inspectors understand fire matics on fire safety, and we even use the same paperwork. So I just wanted to get that clear. That's the reason why Chief Reardon made the statement, he said. As far as the number, it's only three hundred and thirty-one. It's not five hundred and change.
We also do have a new class that's in right now, Class of Fifty. That's going to be three months of training, and then once they come into the Bureau of Fire Prevention, that's going to be another, possibly two months, three months training, because everybody's going to go into a specialized unit and they have, they get hand, uh, one-on-one training with different inspectors who are actually considered captains or lieutenants, so, thank you.
Thank, thank you all for your testimony.
Thank you.
We're going to turn to New York City Emergency Management. Oh, yeah, no, I think Councilman Shulman.
Before you go, guys.
Hey, folks, just one, quick, one sec.
Sure.
Sorry, I thought the chair was going to ask, was going to say something first. Um, one, I want to tell you that I used to work at EMS. I was, uh, in the leadership in the administration. Orrin, um, knows me very well and knew my late part, my late partner Adelaide Conorton, who was a retired lieutenant, uh, at the time, and, uh, was a very proud member of Twenty Five Oh Seven Thirty-Six Twenty-One. Pay parity is very important to me since I ran for the city council, uh, has continues to be. You see me sitting here, um, because I wanted to hear what you had to say. I also want to tell you that I spoke to council, and I'm going to join with the chair to push the state, because I know, I read the, I saw the law that you gave us from the city council, but the state overrides that, so we're going to make sure, we're going to work and push that again. And you have, uh, somebody who is very supportive and will stand in solidarity with you. Uh, so, uh, you know, I, I know what it, you know, I know what you guys do on a daily basis. I used to ride along, I responded to the first World Trade Center bombing in ninety-three, so that's how far back I go. But I just want you to know that you do have people who are supporters here, so I wanted to, I wanted to say that before you left.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member, and thank you all for your testimony. Next, we'll hear from NISIM. To start, we'll hear from Zach Iskell, who's the commissioner, Christina Farrell, who is the deputy commissioner, Christopher Blanco, who is the CFO, and Eliza Urena, who is also deputy CFO. After NISIM testifies, we'll turn to the rest of the folks who are here for public testimony. Thank you for your patience. Here, folks, we'll just start, um, with the testimony. I will kind of swear you all in if you just raise your right hand and affirm the following, affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, answer honestly the council member questions. I do. Great, go ahead, thank you. Commissioner, you may go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, good afternoon, Chairperson Ariola and members of the Committee on Fire and Emergency Management and the Committee on Finance. I am Zach Iskell, Commissioner of New York City Emergency Management. I am joined, joined today by First Deputy Commissioner Christina Farrell, our new Chief Financial Officer as of today, Chris Blanco, great way to start off his time at New York City Emergency Management, and our Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Elisa Urena. As the agency charged with serving New Yorkers before, during, and after emergencies, Emergency Management coordinates the city's preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation efforts in an ever-evolving threat and hazard landscape. We are thankful for our government, nonprofit, private sector, and community partners for helping us serve New Yorkers as we build a more inclusive and resilient city. Two thousand and twenty-two was yet another busy year as we responded to disasters of various size and complexity, including five-alarm fires, an active shooter in the transit system, multiple flooding incidents throughout the city, disease outbreaks, mass migration, storms, and other extreme weather events, as well as deployments to other hurricane-impacted jurisdictions. Time and time again, our staff adapted plans and strategies and responded, always incorporating lessons learned from previous incidents to improve outcomes for our city and its residents. I'm incredibly proud with the best, to work with the best, brightest, and hardest-working emergency management professionals in the world. In two thousand and twenty-two, we responded to or monitored more than thirty-seven hundred incidents, including building collapses, infrastructure infest, incidents, and water main breaks. Our most public-facing program, Notify NYC, available in fourteen languages, including American Sign Language, language, issued over two thousand messages and hit one million subscribers. A huge milestone that we are both incredibly proud of while we simultaneously push to subscribe millions more. In an effort to further expand our presence in your communities, we embarked on a long-term project to have Borough Command Centers strategically located throughout the city. Emergency Management's Queen Borough Command Center opened in March twenty-two at Fort Totten, and the Staten Island Borough Command Center opened in June twenty-two at the Petri Campus. In two thousand and twenty-two, we added nine community engagement networks to our Strengthening Communities Program, bringing the total number of community emergency plans developed to sixteen. Our networks in Far Rockaway and Southern Brooklyn activated to disseminate critical information to their communities during the December coastal flooding and were able to reach almost ten thousand people through phone, text messages, email, and social media. In December, we received an unprecedented number of applications from community emergency networks interested in joining the program, fifty-five applications. From that number, we selected and enrolled twenty-one new networks that are currently working to develop their emergency plans by the end of June two thousand and twenty-three. As always, throughout all emergencies, we continue our blue-sky programs and responsibilities. We held over six hundred and fifty Ready New York Preparedness Events, released seventeen podcasts, sent sixty press releases, held over eighty briefings with the private sector, and provided hundreds of notifications to elected officials. We trained a hundred and thirteen new Community Emergency Response Team CERT members, who are now volunteering their time in their communities. And of note, we continue to strive to make this agency reflect the city that we serve. For example, continuing our commitment to best prepare our non-English-speaking residents, New York City Emergency Management conducted a multilingual biennial emergency preparedness survey, and we continue to explore new and innovative approaches to re, to better reach diverse communities with critical life safety messaging and support. As ever, we stand ready to su, support the emergencies that we don't expect and to be able to pivot at any moment into a response posture. Beginning in August two thousand and twenty-two, Emergency Management coordinated the city's efforts to support asylum seekers arriving in New York City. City response activities include staffing a welcome center at the Port Authority Bus Terminal to greet newly arriving asylum seekers, working with the American Red Cross and Catholic charities to open and operate a navigation center to connect asylum seekers with city and nonprofit services, and establishing humanitarian emergency response and relief centers with New York City Health and Hospitals to provide short-term sheltering. NISIM continues to closely partner with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs and other agencies to identify a long-term strategy for the influx of asylum seekers coming to New York. We continue to look ahead to find new ways to prepare our, the city and our residents for the next emergency. With that, let me now provide a snapshot of our budget for the next fiscal year. Our projected total fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four city tax levy expense budget is thirty-one point five million. We rely on our city tax levy expense budget to support the majority of the agency's administrative, techno, technological, and operational costs. The projected fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four city tax levy personnel service budget is nine point six million, which supports the eighty-one personnel lines paid directly through our tax levy funds. This includes one point five million in funding for sixteen staff members dedicated, dedicated to working on increasing communication and services to people with disabilities, access, and functional needs. Our other staffing is supported through grant funds and personnel on assignment from multiple city agencies. Our projected fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four other-than-personnel service budget is twenty-one point nine million, which covers all agency operating and administrative costs. This budget includes a significant portion of nondiscretionary funding. These funds are designed to cover our warehouse lease, utilities, and telecommunications costs, including the maintenance and operation of our Emergency Operations Center and our backup facilities. This money also supports our fleet and all additional equipment, supplies, and materials needed to run the agency. The agency receives grant funding to support many of our core programs. In the past year, we secured thirty-one point one million in federal funding, primarily through the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. This funding is vital to our ability to run many of our initiatives, including the Ready New York Public Education Program, Community Emergency Response Team Program, Continuity of Operations Program, Geographic Information Systems, Training and Exercises, Watch Command and Response, and Citywide Incident Management System Planning, and the Emergency Supply Stockpile. We work with City Hall, OMB, the city's congressional delegation, and our partner agencies to push for full homeland security funding in future years. This money supports critical operations within ours and several other agencies' budget and is critical to the city. I would like to express my admiration for our incredibly hardworking and dedicated emergency managers who continue to work tirelessly to ensure our city meets challenges. I am honored to lead this agency, and I look forward to continuing our progress and growth. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to working with the council, and I'm happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you so much, Assistant Commissioner. Um, Commissioner Iskell, it's been roughly one year since your appointment as Commissioner for NISIM, and you and Assistant Commissioner Farrell have been tasked with leading New York through not one, but two crises, and you and your team have shown nothing but resilience and expertise and knowledge in the face of all the adversity that has come your way. You've been operating as, it's an Emergency Operations Center, the EOC. NISIM has currently been under EOC for well over three hundred and sixty-five days due to the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic, as well as our current emergencies that the city is facing. Can you describe what being under EOC means and what protocols are changed when under this provision?
Yeah, so first off, thank you for your question and thank you for your partnership. I've loved working with you over the past year. We've stood in some puddles together, uh, canvassed some neighborhoods together, and truly appreciate your leadership, not just for your district, but also the city, so thank you. You know, it's been a, a real honor to be leading this, this agency. In terms of our Emergency Operations Center, uh, we have what we call blue skies and gray skies, so almost everybody in our team has their blue-sky job, which is what they do during the course of normal business, and then they're also part of one of our three on-call teams, red, white, and blue. And those teams are activated for three weeks at a time where they're on-call, and then when something happens, those teams are activated. Those can be smaller activations to deal with a water main break or a fire and the displacement of residents. It could be a larger activation like the COVID emergency that lasted for years. Um, and so when we have a large activation, uh, it means that those on-call teams are working, they're doing the planning, they're doing the interagency coordination, they're making sure that all of the city's agencies and resources, and from our federal partners, state partners, private sector, um, that we're all working together to address the impacts or whatever the issues arising from a specific emergency.
And, um, has been under EOC twenty-four-seven for three hundred and sixty-five days negatively impacted NISIM?
So we, we actually, uh, we were under activation due to the COVID emergency, but that ended, um, a few months ago. a few months ago. So we have not been under constant activation as we had been throughout the COVID emergency. With that said, I think the numbers speak for itself. Our agency has been performing remarkably, whether it was the asylum seeker crisis, helping to provide shelter to over 50,000 individuals, 30,000 now in our care. The team has activated the EOC outside of COVID 10 times, responding to winter weather, flash floods, coastal storms, monkeypox, Hurricane Fiona, the nurses' strike. They've conducted 28 exercise with agency partners. They've had our volunteers prepare for over 124 deployments, prepared 16,000 New Yorkers for emergencies. The activations has not slowed us down at all, and I think it speaks to the remarkable men and women who make up of emergency management.
I 100% agree. Some 31,000 asylum seekers have arrived in New York. I don't need to tell you that, right? You know that. Since the spring, the city has opened 60 emergency shelters to house them. The administration is asking the federal government for $1 billion, but so far has received only a partial reimbursement. Can NISIM and other agencies continue to provide the current level of support without federal aid?
So the mayor has made clear that we need state and federal aid. New York City Emergency Management will continue to step up and do all that we can to serve New Yorkers during this time, and I think we've demonstrated that we're continuing to do that.
In a previous council oversight hearing, you said in terms of reopening Aunt Randall's Island for asylum seekers, when you were asked that question, you said anything is on the table. Is that still true?
Yes, everything still remains on the table.
If they do have to reopen it, what will be done to mitigate public outcry?
So you know, one of the things that we do is we really try hard to work with local communities, to work with local electeds. We're now doing a bi-weekly call with over 90 electeds and staff members to keep them informed. I think there's also been a sea change in understanding amongst New Yorkers that this is not a crisis we necessarily asked for, but it's one that together we need to address all these challenges to represent the best of our city, but also meet our, not only moral obligations, but our legal obligations for this population of asylum seekers. And I would also defer to Christina, my first deputy, anything that you would add to that? No? All right.
Yeah, the asylum seeker meetings are excellent, because we all know what the larger problems are, but during those meetings, we get to talk about maybe some nuanced issues that we're not -- people are not necessarily aware of, and we, as council members, really do appreciate that. What are the COVID precautions being taken at the HRCs?
So I'd have to defer to health and hospitals to give a more substantive answer to the COVID precautions that are taking place at the HRCs.
What steps are nice -- is NISIM doing to educate the public about the ongoing crisis?
So I think I'd defer to City Hall and Moya to speak more in depth about the work that the city is doing to educate folks, other than some of the hearings, the press conferences, press releases that we're putting out to inform people about what is happening.
With the knowledge that you've gained in the past year of being on the job, have you learned anything through the COVID-19 pandemic and asylum seeker crisis, such as should NISIM be a body to prevent emergencies or handle them retroactively?
Yeah, I think that there's, you know, a stitch in Time Saves Nine, you know, and an ounce of prevention. There's, you know, I think that there's never enough that we can be doing before emergencies happen to make sure people are prepared, they have the information that they need. And, you know, one of the mandates that we've been given from the mayor is to move our city upstream. He talks about that in everything from crime or education system, but that certainly is also true of emergencies. And so we are investing a lot in strengthening communities and making sure people have the information, the training that they need to be prepared to face emergency emerging threats and hazards, and also things we can do as a city to better mitigate the effects and impacts of future emergencies.
I really want to commend the CERT operation that you have. One of our local civics, the Heart of Rockaway, Thor, they kind of put that out there a couple of weeks ago, and it was really very informative, and we're urging all our civic associations, community boards, and any community organization to really work with you on that. And as you know, my district is a district that floods at the drop of a raindrop. And also, I want to commend you on the Notify NYC. I notice it's growing, more followers are following, more information is being put out, but are we using Notify NYC for notification with asylum seekers as well?
We're not using it specifically for asylum seekers. If there are incidents that people need to be aware of involving asylum seekers or things, you know, that are taking place around one of the HRCs or emergency shelters, certainly that would be amplified on Notify NYC, but we're not using it specifically for asylum.
I'm going to yield to my colleague, but I really cannot thank you enough for the job that you're doing. It's an insurmountable task, but you're making it look pretty easy.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner, and you and I, one, I haven't been in a puddle with you, but yes.
Soon, soon.
Hopefully, I won't. But you had reached out to me when you first got appointed, and I have not forgotten about sitting down with you at some point. It's just, as you know, things get a little crazy here in the council and the city and everything else, and I also want to point out that Christina Farrell is an amazing first deputy. She and I have worked together on many things, and I have reached out to her. We had during Storm Ida, because I don't live in a quote-unquote flood zone, but we did have a death during Storm Ida in one of the apartment buildings there, in a basement apartment, and because of the flooding. And flooding happened in areas where we didn't expect it to, but she, every time I've called her, whether it's on the weekend or at night or whenever, she's been amazing, so, and the whole team, because I used to work in the Speaker's office as part of the emergency management team. So I'm very familiar with all the operations and everything else, so I commend you for everything that you've done. So I had a couple of questions. One is, in your testimony, you said that the projected fiscal year 2024 city tax levy personnel services budget is $9.6 million, and then you pointed out that $1.5 million in funding is to actually work on increasing communication and services to people with disabilities, access, and functional needs. Can you provide some detail on that?
Sure, so some of that is staff lines and staff funding, some of it is programmatic. Elisa, do you want to comment more on that, or Christina?
Sure. Thanks, Christina. The person -- sorry, the personnel budget covers the staff costs associated with 16 staff members, and the programmatic costs cover a lot of our work, so it might be surveys that we have to do and making sure that the shelters are appropriate for people with disabilities, access, and functional needs. What other kind of programmatic work, Christina?
A lot of outreach.
A lot of outreach, so if we have to translate, sometimes we do it in Braille or in different languages, and so that's what the Other Than Personnel funding goes towards.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of things. We had our 11th annual symposium focusing on communication and services for people with disabilities last week. We were able to do it hybrid for the first time, which was great, and had a lot of -- we had Christina Curry, the MOPD Commissioner, with us. And then also, I wanted to -- it's not CTL, but we, you know, the city is receiving disaster recovery funds through -- because of how Hurricane Ida impacted us, and we'll be receiving some of that money, and a lot of that is focused on outreach, communication, the lessons we learned during Hurricane Ida. So more to come.
So at some point, if you can provide the committee with information about how you reach out to people with disabilities, and whether it's hearing or site or all of that, and so that -- because I'd love to get that out to my constituents, and, you know, please utilize us as a resource too, to get information out to people in the various communities and neighborhoods that we serve in New York City. You know, because I, in my district, I actually have an organization called Alpha Point, and I don't know if you are familiar with them. They are the main organization in New York that deals with people with vision impairment and blind and who are blind. And so if you're not familiar with them, and they're also partly right now in Council Member Ariola's district, would love to connect you with them. They provide an amazing service, and they do employment services, they do all kinds of things, so maybe there's something we can incorporate in terms of emergency management outreach. So would love to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. We have our Strengthening Communities Program, where we actually invest and build -- invest in community-based organizations, nonprofits, organizations that we then work with them to develop emergency plans. They're part of our network. We have 16 in place. We just recruited an additional 21, but would love to include them in that program. It comes with grant funding, with training, and we are specifically targeting a couple -- oftentimes, the Strengthening Communities programs are based in specific neighborhoods or neighborhood focus. We also want to recruit a few that are citywide, but that might focus on specific groups, and so would love to plug them in.
So I want to just switch gears a little bit to the CERT program. Can you provide examples and scenarios where CERT would be deployed?
Sure, there's no shortage. So everything from planned events, you know, like we've got a big parade coming up, St. Patrick's Day Parade, they'll be deployed there. They support events like that, Thanksgiving Day Parade. We also use them for opening up service centers. You know, after the December storms, they were out there Christmas weekend, helping register folks with the Red Cross, making sure that people were cared for, helping provide food and shelter and services to people. We also use them after an emergency for canvassing operations. We had a large sewer backup in the Bronx last year, an example of them doing work as they went door-to-door, knocking on people's homes, handing out information on where they could apply for benefits or certain city programs, but also getting a sense of what the damages are in different communities. There's a lot of different use cases for them, and they've been a fantastic resource and asset.
No, I appreciate that. Can I ask one more question, Chair? So do you still have -- so during September, which is Emergency Management Month, do you still have the programs for kids where you have like a superhero? They have a superhero that goes out.
I mean, as the person who created the superhero, I'll defer to Christina Farrell on this one.
As long as I don't have to dress up.
Who created the superhero and is a superhero.
As long as I don't have to dress up. Yeah, we have Ready Girl. We actually have several Ready Girls now. We have ones that do their presentations in languages other than English. We have one that focuses on Staten Island. So we do, so like you said, September's National Preparedness Month.
Right.
And we do presentations all around. I would also say that this year is the 20th anniversary of both Ready New York and CERT. They were both started in 2003 in the wake of 9/11, and so we're doing a lot of extra things this year to thank our CERT members. We have some that have been with us for 20 years incredibly, some that maybe weren't born 20 years ago, but they're all part of the family. And so, you know, we will do it, be doing lots of outreach throughout the year, but specifically in September.
Would love to work with you on that, get some schools in my district involved. And the other question I have as part of that, if you need more resources for that or more budget money, please let us know so that we can look at that.
One thing, as we end, I will just say we have the Ready School of the Year and Commissioner for a Day. Those are two programs that are active right now. I know we are in our gov team, Rachel has been sending information every week to electeds, but if there's a school in your district that you think is really well-prepared, that you want to recommend, you can fill it out. And also, if you have access to high school students, it's our third annual to have them write an essay, and then the winner comes and gets to hang out with us all day.
Okay, great. No, appreciate that. If you can get information to us, that would be great. Okay, thank you, I'm done.
And also, your willingness to table at all our events in the spring and summer, you know, which is approaching, you know, really meant a lot at the different events that we hold as council members, because a lot of people come and get information, or sometimes you had some PPE for them, you know, back when COVID was at its height. So with regard to the PPE, there wasn't an emergency stockpile? How, where are we at with that emergency stockpile at this point?
So our emergency stockpile is fully stocked. We rotate items based on their expiration dates and use, but our stockpile is fully up to date and fully stocked.
And is the stockpile rotation federally funded?
Yes.
It is?
Yes. Right, it's partially, it's both. It's CTL and federally funded, depending upon the item.
So the recent influx of the asylum seekers has not depleted that stockpile? We're still?
No, it has not depleted our stockpile at all.
Okay, if we don't have any other questions, Madam? No?
All right, thank you.
I want to thank you for your testimony, thank you for coming, and thank you for being so prepared with your answers.
Thanks so much.
And thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you, folks. We'll now turn back to public testimony to wrap up the hearing. We'll hear from John Rusk. We got a couple. Could you go ahead when you're ready?
No, no, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. So thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding a critical issue for the safety of our brave New York City firefighters. This year, the New York City Council is expected to see the Department of Buildings implement new rules for natural gas detectors. Detectors are expected to be required for all New York City dwellings where natural gas appliances exist, and these rules will require a substantial investment of time and resources by the FDNY. These new requirements are part of Local Law 157, which was passed in 2016 after the devastating losses of eight lives in the 2014 East Harlem explosion and two lives in the 2015 East Village explosion. Local Law 157 required the installation of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, with the gas detector requirement being tabled until there was a national standard for natural gas detectors. Once that standard was established, the DOB was to promulgate a rule requiring all New York City dwellings to install natural gas detectors where natural gas appliances exist. While most New Yorkers forgot Local Law 157, the National Fire Prevention Association and Underwriter Laboratories have been working with manufacturers to create a standard for natural gas detection. This past April, the National Fire Prevention Association published the standard for national gas detection, and the DOB is currently writing the regulation. Today, when the fire department receives a notification of a gas leak in a multi-tenant building, they must move slowly through the halls with their gas sensors, with the hopes of finding the source of the gas leak before the gas concentration reaches explosive limits, a kind of terrible game of Russian roulette. In recent years, new technology has emerged, allowing cost-effective and wireless monitoring of many environmental conditions, including natural gas detection. This technology provides notification of a gas leak, including the precise location of the leak, within seconds of a leak reaching 10% of what it would take to explode. Prompt notifications sent to the fire department's dispatch, providing the precise location of the leak, along with the percentage of gas within the space, allows firefighters to efficiently respond to a call. This technology provides continuous updates on gas levels, ensuring firefighters are constantly aware of the explosion risk, enabling a safer environment to address the call. While the sensors don't notify falsely, the fire department will be notified of many more gas leaks, both where the presence of leaks hadn't previously been noticed or the requirement to notify authorities was less prevalent. As the fire department deals with additional calls, making New York safer for us all, the council must prepare for additional dispatches of New York City, as New York City makes itself safer from explosions and improves indoor air quality. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions and have copies of this testimony and a white paper I wrote on gas monitoring from municipalities.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll hear from Tim Heathen, followed by Tom LaPola.
Do you have any access?
No, no, I'm sorry. I might, I have.
All right. I'm gonna let Tom go first. He's better. All right. Good morning, my name is Tom LaPola, and I was a battalion chief in the Fire Department in New York, working in that agency for 38 years before being forced into retirement last year. This is the first time I've appeared before this committee. This is the first time I've appeared before this committee and the second time giving testimony in this iconic chamber, and I greatly appreciate this opportunity. Thank you. Acknowledging upfront that today, this committee is focusing on budgetary items specific to emergency operations. And to be honest with you, my only experience with finances and budgets while employed by the City of New York was placing a Staples order for my firehouse when I was a young company officer. So with that said, I'm obviously not qualified at this time to speak to the immediate budgetary concerns that this committee is charged with administering. But I am here to give some insight into what I believe can maybe be described as an existential budgetary threat, if you will. The Fire Department of New York is currently undergoing an undiagnosed morale problem, one of a magnitude never witnessed by me throughout my lengthy career. The tragic events of 9/11 galvanized the members of this great department, and the firefighters and EMTs rose from the ashes, rebuilding this agency into the preeminent fire department it was before. But this morning, I'm here to address the current state of affairs of this department. I can attest that this malaise now affecting the membership began immediately when the vaccine mandates, when the vaccine mandates were implemented, with unjust terminations and forced retirements as a result. Without question, the morale of this agency has been on a spiral decline ever since. Yes, the fires still go out, and citizens can still rely on the men and women of this department to get it done, but can the men and women of this department still rely on you, the City Council, to support them? And I'm confident they can. And as I suggested earlier, this is, in my humble opinion, a threat to the overall effectiveness of the department, and the needs to be, and this needs to be addressed quickly by the mayor and the council. Although most New Yorkers don't recognize this problem, in fact, some of you on this committee may be unaware of it as well, but the men and women of this department live it every day. Now, obviously, this was not started by the esteemed members of this committee, mind you, but a sobering development nonetheless. Unfortunately, no amount of budget calculations or number crunching can alter this downward trajectory, but I'm here to offer a respectful suggestion on how the city can begin to fix this problem. First, it must immediately rehire all those who unjustly lost their jobs, those who worked throughout the pandemic at great peril to their own health as well as to their families as well, with no strings attached or the relinquishments of anyone's civil or legal rights. Because not until every single member of this department genuinely believes that their jobs are secure and that the city sees them as more than just a line item on the city budget, subject to the whims of politics, will this department begin to heal. So I respectfully implore you, do whatever you can as a committee to get all these folks back to work as soon as possible so that they can provide for their own families by once again protecting their lives, protecting the lives and property of the people of the City of New York, an investment in the future of the city, no doubt, certainly not a budgetary constraint. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and I see you have a Bravest for Choice t-shirt on. We have worked very closely with the Bravest for Choice and for, with many who, who were in a predicament where they were on LWAP or hadn't received the, the answer for their appeal, and we successfully were able to get 16 firefighters back to duty. That did not end with that. We are continuing to work with retirees, and you saw I brought it up during the testimony if you were here, that, and working with the FDNY and the unions to make sure that every single firefighter that either retired or was out on LWAP or was, never, didn't receive their, their appeal are rehired, and they're all given the outreach and the length of time to do so, not being notified today for the five o'clock deadline. So, you know, we're, we're with you.
I know that, and can I take one moment just to thank you publicly for what you've done for the members of this department? I, I personally, I've retired, I was forced to retire, I'm not coming back, but I love this job more than you know. I'm the son of a New York City fireman. I love the men and women in this department, and what you've done for them, I want to publicly thank you, your staff, and all your peers that have assisted these men and women. Thank you very much.
It was a group effort.
Greatly appreciate it.
We, we will continue to fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the acknowledgement.
Uh, yeah, my name's Tim Heaton. I was a lieutenant in the FDNY until I was terminated in July of '22 for not getting the shot. I'm a horrible public speaker, and what I learned in a previous testimony that I can't read well either when I, so, so I didn't prepare anything, but I did want to say that there are, with the budget discussion earlier with the, the overtime and stuff like that, there's a couple hundred of us that want to come back would, and just haven't been allowed to. Now, the commissioner said that, you know, they're working through the process or whatever, but they're using the old process, whereas when you retired, you had up to a year to reapply. That should be streamlined. I mean, we all should, we all want to come back. We shouldn't have to jump through every hoop that they put people through, back in different times. And additionally, I got a, I got a termination letter from Certified Mail, from the Personnel Department. They certainly, nobody's called me, nobody's reached out to me, the unions haven't done anything. Certainly, the Personnel Department has some people now around that they could send out a certified letter to everyone who left the service from 20, from 2020 until now, asking them if they'd be interested in coming back. I don't think that's too much to ask, and I would suggest that you ask for a regular update from the department because they're just, they just keep, you know, putting hoops up, and then we gotta jump through that, and the next one, and they put that up and continues, and basically they're just stringing us out, and I'm probably not gonna have another testimony chance for another year, so I don't want to be back in this position a year from now. And like I said, we all want to go back, but they're not making it easy. The one gentleman with our group sent six emails and four phone calls and never, and still two weeks later, he hadn't heard anything. So they, they certainly, they seemed to want us all to go away and it be over, both the department and the unions, and with, hopefully with some pressure from City Council. The mayor's office obviously is against us. You know, they keep losing, and he keeps throwing up Hail Marys, and we're stuck with waiting for the end. The game's over. I think it's like you've pointed out, it's time for us to get back to work, and nobody's helping us, so, or making it easy at least.
Well, thank you for coming out today to testify, and don't ever say that you're not a good public speaker, because you did a really great job and articulated the issue and the obstacles. So thank you so very much.
On just one additional thing, talk going back to the fifth, fifth man on the engines. Every engine in the city should have the fifth man. The fact that the chief, fire chief didn't specify that is, is kind of stunning, but the Band-Aid, what de Blasio agreed to with the unions was, through collective bargaining, was a Band-Aid to fix a problem that had been lost through the courts in decades previously. But the, the fifth man is a necessity for every engine in the city and not just the 20 that they agreed to, and that's a budgetary issue that, that hopefully the City Council can address as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're gonna now turn to some folks on Zoom. We'll first hear from Lyric Thompson, followed by Krista Odeya and Juan Calcutta. So Lyric, you may begin when you're ready, and we'll unmute you shortly. One sec. Go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, Council. My name is Lyric Thompson, and I would like to speak today briefly about fire safety and HPD's lack of training with regard to the NFPA standards that govern doors. A little over a year ago, we lost 17 people due to smoke inhalation, due to non-code compliant doors. I, in our, in our building, we have fought with HPD for eight years over our doors, which are farm code compliant. For the first four and a half years, we had a non-fire rated door on our building that was never supposed to be there. It took four and a half years to get HPD to finally acknowledge that and write violations for that. We still have issues with our doors and our doors being fire rated and up to the NFPA standards. Over the year, I have learned that HPD doesn't train their employees in this standard. Councilmember Ariola, how is HPD supposed to enforce a standard they have never been trained in? And that's actually a question I'd like answered, if someone could answer that from the City Council, I would be very appreciative.
Is that the end of your testimony?
No, that, that's a question, because depending on what you said, I have to take it further.
This is a budget hearing, but we will be having oversight hearings, and HPD will be present, and then HPD can answer that question, because I know, Lyric, that this is something that is very important to you, which makes it very important to me. And we did have a hearing not too long ago, but it had to be deferred. That hearing will be rescheduled, and I'm hoping that you're available to come on, because I, I do agree with you that there is, I don't, I don't know about the lack of training, but I do know that there is a lack of, of oversight on the latching of the doors in multiple dwellings.
Well, currently, right now, HPD is refusing to write violations on our non-latching doors, because they backed themselves into a corner by telling our landlord that they're fine, they're perfectly okay, she's just a bad tenant. Now, the Department of Buildings just left probably about 20 minutes ago. They documented the doors not latching, they're in the same condition as they were in December when the Channel 12 story came out. They're in the same condition they were in October when the New York Times story came out. Now, I can tell you unequivocally without hesitation that HPD does not, they either don't know the standards and have not been properly trained, or they are refusing to enforce the standards on the books. I think it is the, the first one. They're not, they're not trained in the standards. The class that they would need to take to educate themselves regarding these standards is a 52-minute class, NFPA 80 class, they could take either through the Buildings College or, you know, through the Fire Department. I'm very disheartened when I hear from HPD that our doors have now become a political issue. One of the reasons that this is so important to me is not only seeing what's happened in my building, where we have had years of revolving violations written and removed, but also the fact that this affected door hardware had to be removed by the Fire Department six days after HPD said it was fine. This is an issue that is extremely important for not only the citizen's safety, but the safety of our first responders that show up to save us.
I agree. I, I 100% agree. I look forward to the new, for that hearing to be rescheduled, and I look forward to your testimony that day. Thank you for testifying today.
Thank you. Do we have any idea when that hearing might be?
I don't have a date yet, but as soon as we do, I'm sure that my Chief of Staff, Phyllis, will send you over all the information to come on and be a Zoom participant. Thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you, Councilperson.
With that, next, we'll turn to Krista Odeya, followed by Juan Calcutta. Krista, you may begin. Let's unmute you.
Hi, Councilmembers. Can you hear me all right? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Hi. My name is Krista Odeya, and I was terminated from the Fire Department in March of 2022 due to the vaccine mandate. At the time, I was a 17-year veteran to the company, beginning my career in 2005 as an EMT and working my way up to a paramedic, hazardous materials-trained paramedic, and finally rescue paramedic. I graduated from Medic Basic 9 in 2008 and was paid to be trained solely by the FDNY EMS Academy. I was also paid to attend and train as a hazardous materials technician by the FDNY and EMS HazTAC Battalion, and lastly, I was paid to attend and train as a rescue paramedic by the same FDNY and EMS HazTAC Battalion. The training and investment did not stop there. Every year, I was paid to upkeep the above certifications by attending New York State DOH refresher courses, continued medical education lectures, REMAC exams, hazmat refreshers, and rescue refreshers. Add to that the amount of money for staff to be paid to train me, and the number multiplies exponentially. It is abundantly clear that the amount of money that was poured into my career by the FDNY was an investment for the FDNY. I was a highly specialized member of the EMS service with almost two decades of experience. I was placed on leave without pay on February 25th of 2022 and terminated from my employment as a rescue paramedic with FDNY on March 15th of 2022. All of the money invested into me by the FDNY over the course of 17 years simply thrown away. In addition, I was full-time on the truck 22 Rescue Tour 3, which is the overnight tour servicing the Park Hill section of Staten Island. Since then, how much overtime was paid to cover my vacancy? To be clear, rescue paramedics are the most highly paid paramedics within the FDNY. In order to run a truck with a rescue designation, there has to be one fully trained rescue paramedic riding. How many times did the FDNY have to pay overtime to a rescue paramedic to have my position covered for a 48, 36-hour, two-week rotation over the course of the last year? How many times did the rescue unit run down due to my termination? How many already disadvantaged people suffered from not having an ambulance respond to their emergency as quickly as possible when overtime wasn't covered? The FDNY has paid tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, in overtime to cover the shifts of those who were terminated, forced to retire, and placed on LWAP. And here we are, over a year later, being asked to waive our rights to back pay, waive our rights to take legal action, and waive our civil service rights if we would like the opportunity to be considered for reinstatement. What incentive to return to the FDNY is this? Is the FDNY complacent with paying overtime to cover the shifts of terminated members instead of hiring them back with no strings attached? Is the FDNY complacent with running an EMS service that works on a skeleton crew regularly as per our union president, or in, just stated earlier in this hearing, relying on overtime to fill standard shifts? Are the residents of New York City not afforded the safety of having an ambulance cover their neighborhood? How about the amount of money poured into specially trained members like myself? Does the FDNY have an abundant amount of funds to simply throw away their investments? There have been enough double standards, discrimination, and pointing of fingers over the last three years who will be brave enough to make things right? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Great, thank you so much, Krista. We have one more person here in person, and then we will turn back to Zoom. So we'll hear from Noel Peñas from the New York Lawyers for Public Interest. You may begin when you're ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Noel Peñas, and I am the Health Justice Community Organizer at New York Lawyers for the Public Interest. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony today. I'm here to specifically speak on the funds in the Fire Department budget allocated to BEHEARD, or Behavioral Health Emergency Assistance Response Program. BEHEARD is a deeply flawed pilot program introduced in 2021 by the city via its Mayor's Office of Community Mental Health. NLP is part of a coalition, Correct Crisis Intervention Today, also known as CCIT NYC, which has proposed an alternative program for a non-police response system. The coalition, which holds over 80 member organizations, seeks to replace the BEHEARD pilot program with a proven peer-driven, non-police, mental health crisis response system. Although BEHEARD claims to be responsive to the need to seize individuals experiencing mental health crises from being killed by police, it actually extends the city's long tradition of policing and criminalizing people with mental disabilities without giving them the care that they need. Disturbingly, 84% of all calls in BEHEARD's precincts continue to be directed to the NYPD, even 12 months after its kickoff. The entire program is run by the Fire Department and other city agencies with no role whatsoever for community organizations. The training of the teams does not require a trauma-informed framework, nor does it require skilled instructors who are care providers or peers with lived experience. Anticipated response times to crisis calls can be as long as half an hour. The pilot program operates only 16 hours a day. There are no outcome or effectiveness metrics, and there is no oversight mechanism. All of these flaws are resolved and addressed in the CCIT NYC proposal. Our coalition's proposal is based on a highly successful organ program called Kahoots, Crisis Assistance Helping Out on the Streets, that has a 35-track year record of success responding to mental health crises without causing a single serious injury. Elements of this model propose teams of trained peers and emergency medical technicians who are independent of city government, and teams run by culturally competent organizations. The model also proposes 24/7 operating hours, calls routed to 988 rather than a city-operated 911, and oversight by an advisory board of 51% or more peers. The budget should be used to create a program based on the Kahoots model instead. Community response programs have been shown not just to reduce fatal encounters and free up valuable police resources, but to also generate net positive financial and social benefits. NLP is asking today for the City Council to support the CCIT NYC proposal by funding it, including utilizing the budget allocated to BEHEARD, which is a far less effective program. NLP is also asking City Council to enact this proposal into legislation. Thank you, and that concludes my testimony.
Great, thank you so much for your testimony. We'll now wrap up public testimony on Zoom with Mr. Juan Calcutta. Once, once I'm muted, you may begin. One sec. Yeah. Yeah, I did. Juan Calcutta, go ahead. We can't hear you. If you are there to testify, please speak up. If not, I will wrap up shortly. Finally, we'll ask, going once, going twice? Okay. With that, we have one more person registered, Mr. Stein. And seeing there is no other individuals here present, giving Mr. Calcutta one more time to see if you're available. If not, we will move on. Okay. Okey-dokey. And with that, we will turn back to the chair to close things out. Thank you.
So, this concludes our Fire and Emergency Management Budget Hearing, and I have thanked them before, but again, I cannot do it without the amazing team that is here with me today, including our Sergeant-at-Arms that put together all of our online Zoom interactions. So, thank you so very much, and have a great rest of the day, everyone.